Good evening, everyone.
Thank you for the moment.
We'd like to get started. On time is early for us, so if we could get started now. Good evening. This is the September 25th, 2025 Planning Board meeting. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're going to do the roll call. Jim Bonanno is here, Phil Nemisak.
Present.
Lauren Goodrich.
Present.
Joe Rubino.
Present.
Michael Fortunow.
Present.
Let's see, we have to approve meeting minutes. Phil, did you have any comments on this?
I finished the review, but I was unable to send an email around, so I'll do that. We'll approve it next time.
Oh, once they're submitted?
Yeah, because I don't feel right about not letting everybody look at them.
So, the applications that we are going over today are 80 Park Avenue, just so you know what's on the agenda, 249 Main Street, 15 Tuckahoe Avenue subdivision, 10 Joyce Road, 2 Howell Place, followed by 25 Stratford Road, and then all of the White Plains Road, 367 White Plains Road applications. There's three. And then, I think there's one more.
Yep, there are two for 367 and three for 750 White Plains Road.
Okay, right, two for 367 and one for 750. And then LT Eastchester Equinox, that's at 750. And that's everything. Cool. So then, there's a few that have been adjourned, actually, and will not be heard today, in case you're here for them. It's Simon Lloyd Country Club, Sal's Market and Pizzeria, 750 One White Plains Road, 305 White Plains Road, 210 Marble Dale subdivision, and 34 Water Street, as well as 1 and 3 Wrigley-on-Away. These will be heard in the October 23 meeting. And application 25-54 ICC has withdrawn their application, will not be heard tonight. So the first matter of business, more just administrative, we have an application here that needs to have a 90-day extension, and that's what we're going to do. The applicant doesn't have to be here, so we're just going to read what it is and make a motion, so everyone stay seated. So for application 2401 to Maple Avenue subdivision is a 90-day extension of a subdivision approval, and the approval was granted on March 27, 2025. This is just administrative. So I'm making a motion to grant a 90-day extension of the conditional preliminary final subdivision approval for application 2401, 42 Maple Avenue. All conditions, the approval granted for this project as set forth in resolution approval dated March 27, 2025 will remain in full force and effect. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Cool. The first one is, the first application we're going to hear is 2509 80 Park Avenue.
My name is Milot Shala. My name is spelled M-I-L-O-T, first, last, S-H-A-L-A, I'm the project architect for 80 Park Avenue, presenting this evening as well for the engineer and land surveyor Elliot Sinor. So we're, we've returned this evening to present-
Excuse me one second. Hey Gary, can you zoom in on the graphics, please? Yes, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Is it okay if I actually point the laser at the monitor as well? Is that allowed?
Yeah, sure.
This laser, actually, I think it points on the screen, so it's pretty cool.
Okay. Yeah, you can do that.
Yep. So, yes, so this evening, we're presenting a revision to the project that we had presented at the last meeting, during which we received comments and suggestions from the board members with respect to the proposed reconstruction of the one-family home. The first iteration that was presented to the board was a modernist cube, if you will, which was predominantly of a white stucco color, and it had a particular roof deck. And the consensus at the board was that the roof deck was a bit, if you will, out of place for the neighborhood. It had some, you know, issues with privacy, so the owner, Diana, and Bernard, who is present with me this evening, have elected to forego the roof deck. So then, we went back to the drawing board just a little bit to revisit the design for the home, to reduce some of the modernist language. The design language was a bit too minimal and too pure, so then we got some references from Federalist architecture. Some towns have these colonnades with some terraces in the front, which introduce this communal-type experience, and then we bring people together at the front yard, if you will. And then we went on further to warm up the facade just a little bit, and bring in some of the darker tones from the Tudor homes in the neighborhood. So if you wouldn't mind scrolling down just a bit, onto the renderings, if you will?
No.
Yeah, sorry. Well, I guess maybe zooming on the front, or maybe I'll just go onto the next page here. So maybe you can zoom into the, one of the renderings, if you can, on your, so you can see a little bit, some of the language that we created with materials. So, the composition is the base, the pedestal of the building is comprised of veneer granite, and we have stucco in the facade predominantly with painted white columns to resemble some of the Federalist architecture, refers to more of a traditional design with crowns. And then we have the wood veneer at the two accent corners. So with respect to composition, this is the extent of the changes. The volume remains the same. The building has not changed in size, if you will. The roof is a sloped shed roof, which will have a metal finish to it, so the snow should very easily slide off of it onto the gutters and scuppers at the rear of the building. So this pretty much concludes the revisions to the building, as this was the predominant, you know, this was a concern during the last review, so this is what we wanted to address.
Is this, as in the prior iteration, effectively a teardown?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. In essence, this is a teardown. We made every good attempt to maintain some of the foundation walls. We're still studying to see if we can maintain the foundations as best we can. However, we need to be on the side of caution, to be careful with foundations, we may end up replacing most.
How old is the building that you're effectively replacing?
So, I mean, there were not, I mean, there were no repairs done to the home since it was built in the 20s, so it's a pretty old building.
About 100 years old, roughly?
Yeah, roughly about there. So it's been, it's been, there was some notes by someone that was even early, but it could have been a small, you know, country home back in the day.
Got it.
So it's actually, right now, walls are really not in good shape. They're all leaning by three to five degrees, so there's no way to keep existing structure.
Okay. And you've given us a streetscape there on the bottom?
So, yes, so correct, if you would mind zooming in into, like, the photographs you see onto the left, oh, I'm sorry, just up top, please. So, yeah, so to the left, we have, you know, this is the house to left, maybe you can see on the upper photograph, I'm not sure how visible it is on the picture, way above on top of the page. And then you can see the two homes flanking our home to the left and right, they're quite similar. However, our intent was not to exceed the height of existing homes. That was very important to us, so we don't create a dominant volume in the neighborhood. Whereas we want to go, sort of, try to use the horizontal composition to achieve the outdoor spaces and not so much the vertical. So, again, recognizing that the building is a little bit cleaner than, you know, in terms of forms, we want to make sure that we maintain a lower bulk.
So the roof elevation is the same as the ridge of the adjacent homes?
I believe so, yes.
It's not higher, is my question?
Correct, yeah.
But you're not going to, no one's going to be looking down on the roof. No one is able to look down on your roof, because the adjacents are?
My presumption would be no. These may not be able to look down.
Is there something that shows that? You said it's flat.
I'm sorry?
Do you have something that shows the roof?
Oh, yes, I have the real views.
Yeah, that's good.
The isometric views.
That's fun.
You can see them up from here. So these show the standing seam aluminum roof, which is enveloped with a crowned frame, if you will, fascia.
Does it have a color, or it's a?
It's actually darker, it will be a matte black. So this will be actual, you can see it a little bit on this rendering, and I'm not sure if this can show a little bit better on the monitor, but it should be black, but because of reflection from the sun.
It's going to be black.
Typically, on larger buildings, we recommend silver color to remove the heat island effect for the home. However, this is a smaller building, so it will not increase the heat as much, so we can get away with matte black. And the owner liked the black as well, so. Or they will not be visible, other than, I guess, from the neighbors of the building directly behind us, the apartment building, they may see the black. So to their, for their, I guess, to them, for them it would be better if it's actually black, because if it's silver, it may reflect the color during the, you know, summer season. So black would probably be best with respect to reflective color.
So, on the last iteration, well, were, are those cornices and everything right there and at the roof, were they on your last design, or are they new?
Yes, this is new, sorry. This would be the references to the Federalist architecture that are comprised of a colonnade at the terraces and balconies, and we have the crown fascias to enhance some of the traditional details. Whereas prior proposal was pure modernist form with very little trim. And we steered away a little bit for the recommendations of the board as well, to pick up some of the moments of the neighborhood, to save with them the vernacular of the neighborhood with respect to neighboring homes.
Yeah, I noticed that immediately.
Yeah, I like it. I think it's refreshing. It's not, it's still not like anything in that neighborhood, but it's, I do see the, sort of, the traditional, I guess what you would call the Federalist style. And I think it's also meeting your clients' desires to have a fair amount of outdoor space, right? With all the porch areas, and so I kind of like it.
So, I liked it until a minute ago, and I saw, what are those big lights on the front porch? Those globe-shaped things? Yeah.
So, that's just planters with some, you know, plantings, basically. We're trying to introduce as much green, greener onto the building, so. If you're referring to the upper portion, is that correct?
No, no. On the lower porch, right?
Well, these are just light fixtures. These are some decorative light fixtures. I mean, they're not going to be as dramatic as I showed them, there's way too much drama there.
Yeah, they're, they're pretty dramatic.
They will probably make a more subtle-
They look orange to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
They have this copper quality. I think what I was going for, this, you know, sort of like an aged patina copper, but it does look orange.
This has to go to ARB, so they would pick them on that completely immediately, right?
Yes, exactly. The ARB will be able to fine-tune it.
Sorry, got excited there a little bit. It will not look like this. I can almost, Bernard will not end up buying a round orange.
So, now the only thing I'm trying to understand, or at least maybe visualize a little bit better, are the adjacent houses. And I guess the best place to see that is on your first sheet, where you sketch them out, right? Right there.
Would this be it? I'm sorry.
Right here, the bottom, the streetscape. Yep. Yep.
Yeah, so this tells the story the best. As to the, you know, landscaping at the front, we have the large hydrangeas flanking the entrance to create a little bit more privacy for even the homeowner as they're entering the home, and then as well at the-
Can you please use the microphone?
Oh, sorry. Also, the front, sorry. At the front porch as well, we're introducing some planters, as well as the terrace above, we'll have some planters as well. So, we tried to envelop the homes and just basically wrap the home around with some landscaping as best we could. We will have green giants arbivites encircling the property, U-shaped, from front hallway to the rear and to the side.
Oh, where is that shown?
So it's shown a little bit on the 3D view, the isometric view.
How tall are green giants?
These will be up to 14 feet tall. They can start at eight feet and they can go up to 14 feet.
But that's not what's rendered.
Right, so, again, what I'm showing here is eight feet. If need be, we can go up to 14 feet. So what I show in the rendering is a little bit less. We didn't want to overpower the neighbor with the, unless, you know, there's a particular requirement by the board to go taller, we can go up to 14 feet.
What's the requirement? I missed that.
I'm sorry. Unless the neighbor or the board may require taller screening between both homes, then we would go with taller than eight feet. But we want to provide screening from, basically, we recognize we have terraces, so we want to provide a screen of eight feet minimum between the neighbor and the terrace that we're proposing, so they don't really overlook into our terrace.
I mean, but they're your arbivites. They're yours, so you get to choose how high they are, don't you?
Well, yes, we just, you know, we're not sure if we can go as tall as 14. And some towns, they do have some restrictions as to the height.
Do we have anything like that?
No.
We don't? Okay, that's good. So, right now, we're showing on the rendering, eight feet, if you will, we can, of course-
And over time, they'll be taller?
May grow taller, you know, depend, you know, depend on the species that we're-
Good species, that does, right? If they're well maintained, they're beautiful. The arbivites, they're bright green, they're really beautiful.
Yeah, the green giants, I think, I have some that are more than 20 feet.
I have a photo here of the one that was, thought of a similar project that I worked on and was done by the same landscaper, so I'll show you a photo that I have here. This is as tall as we, if I can look fine on the page. Let's see here. Here we go. So you can see in this corner here, this is, this is the height that we're going to put on this project. I'm not sure if it's visible on the monitor. And these will be the hydrangeas at the front yard. So we have the, this is, these are just some, you know, typical bandits flowers around. This is the tallest landscape in the property, so this will be up to this height. This is 14 feet.
Yep, if you could just use the microphone.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. You've answered all my questions. Oh, no, the only other thing is the wood. Do you, the wood is also new, isn't it? The wood siding?
Yes, I have a photograph, a large photograph of-
Vertical wood siding, that's new.
I have elevations that show it, but I think I have also materials of the actual rain on the wood texture. So this is the actual sample that we're going to install. This will be the accent on the front right-hand corner, as well as the rear left-hand corner. So we're accenting the material from front to rear of the building, so we can balance the composition of the materials and textures and colors. And I have it shown on the rendering here, maybe an isometric view would show it best. So in this view here, you can see that this, this is the rear corner, and this would be, if you will, you can see, that would be the front corner. So we're accenting the diagonally, the texture, and the color is reflected onto the other side. So we took this cube, which was very minimal, and we tried to break it with a wood material. So again, just to reiterate, this material is, I've used this very material, Lashmont Pharmacy. If you look at the fascia, Lashmont Pharmacy has this wood, it's from Spain. It's really nice material. It's like what we call the rain screen system, so it's really durable.
It's composite?
It's actually no wood veneer, it's natural wood veneer.
What kind of wood is it?
So this is, this particular, this will be the walnut cladding. For Lashmont Pharmacy, we use a little bit lighter color, but this will be the walnut cladding for this one. There's a building in Spain, it's been there for 20 years by the ocean, and it has not deteriorated yet, so it's been proven to work very well.
All right. Thank you. Any more questions, guys? Thank you.
I just wanted to point out that the town engineer is here, and he's reviewed this application. If you wanted to talk about the stormwater or any engineering comments.
You read something on this for us?
Most of the stuff I've read.
I read it. Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Let's just keep going. I'm sure whatever it is, you guys could work out. I'm most interested in the aesthetics. So then, this is, thank you. So this is a, this is a public hearing, so we have to, we have to open the public hearing, so I make a motion to open the public hearing, application 2509 80 Park Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. This has been noticed, so if there's any comments from neighbors regarding this, good, not so good, or other, you could come up and say what you think about it. Going once? Going twice? Okay.
We do have 15 applications.
What's that? Yeah, yeah, I'm good.
Get it moving.
Thank you. I'll make all the comments then. I like it. So, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
We're just going to keep the public hearing open until we get comments back from the ARB.
Darn, we can't close it?
Yes.
Okay. So then, any more comments?
No.
All right, that's good. So then, we're going to, right, so I make a motion to refer this application, 2509-
I think you have to, the motion wasn't seconded, you have to vote on closing.
Oh, the motion, right.
No, we're not going to close the hearing, we're going to keep it open.
Not closing. But I am going to make a motion to forward this application, 2509 80 Park Avenue, to Architectural Review Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I guess I should make a motion to continue public hearing on this until the October 23rd, 2025 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next application is 249 Main Street, application 23-30.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Smith, Principal with Planning and Development Advisors, here on behalf of Angelo Agavino and Eastchester Manor Developers. This presentation kind of reminds me of the movie Groundhog Day, if you're familiar with that movie, where Bill Murray, the Bill Murray character keeps waking up to the same day, and we're here to discuss the same application, only it's, like the movie, I keep thinking-
I forget how it ends.
You haven't seen that?
I don't know, how does it end? I don't remember.
Oh, it ends, it ends-
Don't give away the ending.
Spoiler alert.
Let them see it, yeah.
It ends with a great day, and we're hoping that we finally hit upon a great project that is similar in nature.
But he does see Ned Ryerson a lot, right?
Yeah, hopefully I'm not the Ned Ryerson character. Appreciate that, thank you. So, just by way of background and history, Mr. Agavino had purchased the property and then submitted an application to your board back in 2018, 2019, and in 2020 was approved for four-story, 15-unit building with nine one-bedroom, six two-bedrooms, and 26 parking spaces. Subsequent to that, Mr. Agavino purchased 47 New Street, and in 2023 appeared before your board initially with a six-story building with 25 units, 15 one-bedroom, 10 two-bedroom with 36 parking spaces. And after a review, an extensive review, and if you recall, there was a video presentation that Mr. Agavino had made about the six-story building and how it fit into the character of the neighborhood. And at the time, I think the board was poised on issuing a positive declaration, that that particular application with the six stories didn't fit in with the character of the community. So Mr. Agavino went back and revised the plan, the application to a four-story building that was zoning compliant with 25 one-bedroom units and 30 parking spaces. There were a number of variances that were required, and when we appeared before the zoning board, some of them were granted, and then some of them were not. So Mr. Agavino went back and reevaluated the plan, and that's where we are tonight. He's revised the application to a three-story building with six units, all of which are three-bedroom units and 16 parking spaces. The application is what we believe is zoning compliant, it's certainly less with respect to impacts than the previous applications. What I'd like to do now is have Mr. Agavino just walk you through the site plan as it's been amended, and then if there are any questions, or certainly if you want to open up to the public, be happy to answer any questions.
How you doing? Angelo Agavino. I'm the owner of this project, hopefully fourth time is a charm. So, based off of everything that the other board, they didn't like the project, didn't fit in with the town, so went back with the team and came up with this idea. We're taking out the New Street property. It's no longer a part of the project anymore, we're going to do something else with that at some point. Came up with this new idea, it's a six-three-bedroom building. So, the flow of traffic, you come in on Main Street, go around the building, come out. We have ability for delivery drivers to stop and also have traffic pass by them. Every apartment is a three-bedroom and has a two-car garage. There's also some parking in the back here, we actually have one extra space that needed. There's a lot more landscaping than there was in the previous multiple projects. We also, with my engineer, we are using pavers that are pervious, so these walkways and some of the parking spots back here, actually all the parking spots back here are the pavers that have, like, grass growth to it, so the landscaper comes over and cuts them with the weed whacker, but it's, it becomes pervious, so we alleviated the problem of, because essentially this is the same building envelope of the previous projects that were presented and approved, the first project, this is-
The same footprint.
Yeah, the same, the same footprint of the previous, besides, there was an overhang that was underneath here, but the roof, if you look at from the top, it was essentially, you know, within inches of the same size of the project previous. So we got multiple variances for pervious surface and pervious surface, and so we decided to change it up, and I think it would be a nice look anyway, because, you know, some block tops, some pavers, I think it would be great. So this is only a three-story, so it's basically a garage, that's, I don't know if you guys saw the plans, so the first floor, essentially basement, is just parking and a utility room. And then you go upstairs. There's one ADA-compliant apartment that has an elevator in it, so the first floor, you come in, is a living room, dining room, all open floor pan, everything's open, there's no walls, besides the bathroom and closets and stairwell and stuff like that. And then every apartment's essentially the same. You go up to the third level, which is really the second level, and we have the bedrooms, three bedrooms, there is two bathrooms, and, you know, beautiful master bedroom with a walk-in closet, master bathroom, and then the other two bedrooms share a bathroom here. I wanted with a look of, of a, like, modern farmhouse look. I wanted to do, AZAC makes a, basically a piece of plywood, but it's not wood, it's made of plastic, and it lasts forever. and it lasts forever. It's a, like, forever material that goes up, it's, it's a, a four-by-ten sheet, and then there's these, um, masonry slats that go in between the, the, um, the joints of the plywood, and then it, it, you know, modern farmhouse type of look. I, um, I didn't get it, um, a rendering in time to come to this board, um, but when I come back, I'll have three D rendering for you guys. Um, I don't know if you drive by the area, I, I redid a building that's across from the, the funeral home, it's two hundred Main Street, it's same type of look, that building I own, and we rent it still. Um, it's gonna look similar to that, but, you know, newer, all, you know, every, um, twelve to fourteen inches, there will be a slot, um, for the modern farmhouse look, black windows, white trim around.
Is that rendered anywhere, other than, is that, is it, is not color rendered yet? You said you will come back.
I don't have a color rendering right now, we didn't have it done in time. I asked them to, it just takes a bit of time.
What's the width?
But this is, um, this is, this is, um, the, this is the front elevation, and this is the side, so if you're coming in from, uh, Main, it's right here, so these are, each apartment is one, two, three, and then you would drive around, and then you would have the three entrances. It's basically three attached houses, and in the back, same thing. Basically the same thing just mirrored to the other side, and cut in half, so it's a big square cut into six pieces. There's, um, each apartment has a balcony above the garage, the two-car garage, and this, and it, you know, it's not, um, it's just a Juliet balcony, just to kind of break up the facade there, instead of making it just look like a, a box. Um, I think it would be great to have, you know, walk out the family room and have just a little bit of a,
Fresh air.
Get some fresh air, you know, you can't really come out there barbecue or anything, but there's, you know, there's a little space to have a double, uh, double door there, I think it's gonna be great. That's about it. If you guys have any questions, I'd love to answer them for you.
No, I think it's, uh, thank you for going back to the drawing board, literally, and redoing it, I think it's a vast improvement.
Yeah, so it's basically no longer a centralized building, it's more of like a townhouse feel, individual units.
And each, each unit would have two floors?
Essentially three, so it would be the garage, basement area, even though it's above ground, and then, you know, the two floors, livable space. So the first, the first floor is just, it's all open, it's basically like, you know, just huge garage.
Yeah.
If you put a little, a little door, what are you gonna left with? A couple closets, and, you know, you're, it's better to have, you know, for the kids' bikes and all the toys, and, you know, I'm sure you guys, your garage is full of stuff.
Is that, so are they, they're actual garages?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's a two-car garage, so.
Are there utilities down there, like, uh?
I'm sorry?
Are the, are there any?
Yeah, the utility, I'll pull up the plan, I'll show you.
Like washing machines and stuff like that, is that in the basement?
Washing machines upstairs.
Upstairs, okay.
There we go, sorry. Um, so each box is an apartment?
Yep.
So three on this side, three on this side, so this is the door, it's a double door.
Stairs coming down from the, yeah.
Stairs are on the side to go upstairs.
Yep.
This is gonna be like a little, um, vestibule area for shoes and stuff, and just so the, the carbon dioxide and stuff from the cars, by code, you know, doesn't, doesn't travel its way upstairs. There's gonna be a fire door here, and then the stairs to go up, and this will be all open, then the back here is the utility room.
And are the six units all approximately the same size?
Yes.
And what's the square footage, uh, of each of the, the units? Ballpark, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's around twenty-two to twenty-four hundred square feet, I'm not, I don't know exactly, also, I remember when we were going to the drawing board, I was right in between there. I would have to sit down and calculate, but I can.
Yeah, okay, but it's in the seventeen?
But that's the two top floors, not including the garage, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So not including the garage, each, so.
That's fine, that's, you've answered the question, I don't need to know it with mathematical precision.
So we have consultants, um, that we're gonna ask to speak in a minute, but before you sit down, let's talk about the one, our one concern, where the utility is coming in off of Main, where they are, what the height is, if you had transformers, what exactly is that? And it has to be shown somewhere.
I reached out to Con Ed, um, they're not assuming a transformer onsite, but if they need one, it would probably go up on the pole because there's not really any area on the floor for stuff here. Just gonna be overhead wires. So at this point, they're, they're saying no, but they need to go back and calculate the whole load and all that stuff, but there's no transformer as of yet, that they told me. So there's gonna be overhead wires to the, to the building, and then gas and, um, water would be underground sewer. We would access it, um, you know, coming into the front of the, the building over here, and then going into each, each utility room.
So you're saying there's no change from existing conditions as far as electric cable and everything else?
No. It's gonna be overhead wires, they're gonna be substantially thicker, but still the same, it, you know, the, the building that's there that's existing right now, it's a multifamily house, it, you know, it has a very small gauge wire, but it would be a similar wire. I'm sure that they're probably gonna be, um, accessing it from here or here, um, probably this point because there's a telephone pole right here, and they would access it, this one has a, a big transformer that they supply, some sort of device that, that powers, uh, Bronxville, so I don't think they were gonna come on this, so I think the, the electrical, the electrical lines are gonna be overhead from this pole that's right here on the corner of the driveway here, and it would just go overhead, and this, there's a ton of wires there already going into the firehouse and everybody else that's in the area.
Is that, is that enough for him just to note that existing utility is to remain as, to remain, or?
Yeah, I think we'd probably like to see it on the rendering or on the elevations, so you can see what the visual will be, the fire department wanted to make sure that it had enough clearance if it crosses the driveway. Yeah, just to make sure that the clearance is maintained, which I don't think is an issue.
Oh, to put that on the drawings?
Correct.
Okay, well, you're coming back, right?
I, I don't know if we have it on this one, but we went over them with existing wires that are there now, and the, it's, the electric lines are nowhere near where the, it's, the lowest, the lowest lines are there, Verizon, AT&T, and all that. Those are the lines that are lower that, that they're worried about, that are existing right now, and as of yet, they're not an issue with their trucks. So like, the lines that are coming across the property right now from, you know, along Main Street, that they're worried about coming in, because they're not gonna be, there's no, there's no wires that we're gonna put in that are gonna cross the driveway. They're gonna be from the, the, from the pole, over grass, and touch the building. So they're worried about, um, the wires that are existing now, that when you drive into the driveway, and as of the last project, everything was good, we, we, we surveyed them, and, but I'll, I'll put them on the drawing, like, no ask.
Okay, all right, thank you. Can we just talk about traffic and parking and stuff? Rick, stand by.
Phil, how are you?
Uh, good evening, Philip Greeley, Colliers Engineering and Design. We have a, uh, letter dated September twelfth. We reviewed this application, uh, significantly, uh, fewer trips than the previous application. Uh, we've asked the applicant just to indicate, based on the current standards, what that generation would be. My feeling is it would be, uh, even though they're apartments, they would be more similar to a townhouse or a single-family trip generation, but it would still be less than what was analyzed before. This is a county road, they will need a permit from Westchester County. The driveway locations are the same as the previous application, and we've just wanted to make sure that the site distances, that there's nothing that obstructs the site distances. Uh, again, the county will be the ultimate approval on the permit for that. We had a question about deliveries, I think the applicant described what his intent is to have an area where smaller delivery vehicles could pull into the site. We've asked for some turning diagrams to demonstrate that the vehicles could enter into the garages, and then also that smaller delivery vehicle could circulate on the property. And then we recommend that the emergency service is just opine on this. They had reviewed the previous application, and just to make sure that they're okay with everything. And those were, are really our only comments on this, you know, smaller project than what we had reviewed before.
And we did refer this to the fire department, and they didn't, they withdrew their comments from June because of the size of the building, and they didn't have any additional comments other than to maintain the height of the lowest point of the power lines across the driveway.
That's the only thing they have.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Can we see if Rick has anything, anything substantive to talk about? No? Good. We're gonna keep rolling, man. Thank you. You only have to say it once. Sold. Okay, so I, I think looking over, there are some things that, well, at the very least, before, where's my architect, or my owner? I, I mean, we really have to see what it looks like before we, we, before we, uh, send it to the ARB. I mean, we need renderings and anything else that needs to be cleaned up.
And I, there, I have some, um, elevations there, I've been, we're gonna be back in front of the board again.
But usually we like to see what it's gonna look like before we refer it to the next board.
No, isn't it, isn't this just for, um, the environmental impact that, that we need the referral for?
This is a public hearing.
Yeah, this is a public hearing. I mean, is that right?
I, I think in any circumstance, you probably won't be able to get on the ARB until November, and even if you come back to this board in November, you can still make the ARB in November.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing very mysterious about this, we need to see what it looks like. We, you know, we, architects come and they have a full rendering, and we have to say if we up, down, the ARB looks at it, but we need to see, we need to see it before. And anything else that needs to be cleaned up?
Um, just to clarify, so, uh, I, I think one of the, um, comments that Mr. Agavino raised was the environmental determination. That's one of the aspects of this application. Is the board comfortable with at least issuing a negative declaration with respect to the application, understanding that they have to come back with some additional information relative to?
Right, so we had adopted a negative declaration on the prior four-story plan, because this is different and less impactful, we'll have to revisit that and likely amend that negative declaration. Um, my thought was to do that actually the next time the, this application is before the board. The Architectural Review Board is only advisory, so you don't need a SECR determination in order to be referred there, unlike the Zoning Board of Appeals that makes a substantive determination. So I thought at the next round of this, we would wrap up SECR, but not before the ARB referral.
And
Understood.
At the same time, or at the same meeting?
Render a decision if you're ready to, yes.
So at the next meeting, provided, we may be able to get the, the site plan approval along with the?
Well, it sounds like the board would like to see the rendering and the architectedals, so that if you can make the submission deadline for October, the ARB meeting for October is next week, so the submission deadline has passed already. But there's enough separation distance between the October planning board and the, uh, November ARB that you could probably make that sequence. So return here in October, and hopefully be in a position to make an, a submission to the Architectural Review Board if you're comfortable with the architecture at that time, uh, for November.
Okay.
Yeah, and as Noel said, um, because this is a, you, all indications are, if we adopted a neg deck last time for a larger structure, you know, you, you shouldn't be too worried about that, I mean, unless there's something that we're missing that we're gonna see next time, so.
Okay, understood.
Mm-hmm. Is there a few other minor comments that you noted out in the plans that you could coordinate with Noel and?
Correct.
Might as well clean up now, since you didn't do that, show the wires and show everything, and, and then you come back and it'll be, uh, relatively easy.
Okay, understood.
Okay. Thank you.
Would we be able to get a final, um, I guess we could talk about it later, but can they vote on, uh, the, the final approval of that, after that?
After the ARB review is completed. Yeah, so our, so the planning board meeting after that, uh, uh, November sixth, Architectural Review Board would be December fourth, I believe.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Do you need to open up a public hearing tonight?
Uh, good point, thank you.
The public hearing on this is open, but we can ask if there's public comment?
It is, it remains open, so if there are any comments from the public, now's the time to talk about this application. Uh, so, no comments, I guess I'm just gonna make a motion to continue the public hearing, right? So I make a motion to continue the public hearing on application twenty-three dash thirty, two forty-nine Main Street, to the planning boards' October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, we'll see you again.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next application is twenty-one dash seventeen, Tuckahoe Avenue subdivision.
Good evening, everyone, Michael Maschig, aqua engineer for the project. Uh, since we were in front of you last, which was a few months ago, we were able to obtain all our, uh, variances that were required for the subdivision. Uh, we've worked with, um, your town engineer to finish developing the stormwater and the calculations and all the, I think all the details, um, regarding the subdivision and, and the utilities. And we would like to try to move forward, hopefully soon, to get in front of the Department of Health for them to review it.
Oh, that's it, right. Do we have any open items?
Can you remind us where we left off and, and, and what, uh, what, what our homework assignment is today?
Okay, so where, where we left off, we, we were discussing with, um, the town engineer, the whole stormwater system, the overflow system.
Yes.
And how that tied into Howard. Um, I've had discussions with twenty-three Tuckahoe, she's all okay with it. I've been trying to reach out to the owners of Five Duluth and eighty-six to finalize that little piece. As, just to give a little history, there is, so what happened was, back in the late fifties, early sixties, when Country Market was built, they built up the grade, they built up a wall, and what happened is it stopped the overlaying flow of this whole area, created flooding.
It dammed it up.
Right, so all the neighbors got in touch with the town, and whoever was in charge of the town at that time, and the town had the DPW come in and put in a drainage system in. There's no easements, there's no records of how that was put in, if it was prescriptive or what. The pipes that are there now are very undersized, so that area still collects water, and it takes a long time for it to disperse. So, um, what your town engineer requested from me is that as we're developing this, we'd have to, because our property currently is served by this storm system, we'd have to take the expense of replacing it and upgrading it and making it better for the neighbors, which is fully understandable. And that was part of the whole redevelopment of coming through and.
And that's gonna, and that's, the, the idea is to get that to Howard Avenue, Joyce Road, where it'll drain out?
Right, so right now, those pipes are really, really flat, and they're very undersized, and they're very shallow. So in the redesign, we took into account, we had survey, you know, our survey crew go out there and locate everything, and we created the pitch and the actual movement of water, of not just letting it sit there.
Okay.
And that was part of, I'm sorry, that was part of the whole thing, was the storm drain system that's on, and the sewer system on Tuckahoe Avenue is very antiquated, it's old, it's very fragile.
And it's overtaxed.
Right, so, you know, it was kind of between the town engineer and us, we, we said that's the path of least resistance.
And, and you have a, a plan in place now, um, that you, you have all of the, the easements and whatever lined up?
We have everything lined up to here, I've been trying to get in touch with the owner of Five Duluth and eighty-six Howard to finalize that. that little piece, but we have, we have counsel here this evening that's prepared all the easements. I think there's some modifications that we have to make on it, which is with Noel, and we're pretty much there, you know?
Okay.
But, you know, one way or another, whether it's this little piece or if this owner wants us to go this way, that, this whole drainage system is gonna benefit everybody because everybody has problems with water in that area. So now they have a place to actually tie in their drains and get the water moving and be able to live a little bit better.
Yeah, there are a couple of issues in this area. So through that off-site easement that connects the property to the lines in Howard Avenue, there's the storm line that we're talking about now, there's also a sanitary sewer line. And we don't have any information about whether the two off-site property owners have agreed to grant the easements that are shown, which is kind of a significant issue that we need to resolve in order to move forward with this.
Well, I do have, I can, I have a, a map that 23 Tuckahoe did sign, so they're okay with the easement.
Yeah, we haven't seen any information from anybody.
And so, so...
So, some of this was kind of, I'm sorry, it was kind of delayed.
Let me, let me just make sure I'm understanding then, at, at, he's gonna have to get the easements. I think he recognizes that. Assuming he gets the easements, we still need to be convinced, and Mr. Bolander will need to be convinced, that the, you know, the new pitch, the bigger pipes and all that are gonna get the job done.
Yeah, we have two issues here. Number one, you know, before you can make a decision on this application, we need to have, you know, if not assigned and filed easement, more assurances that we have that that configuration is an achievable configuration for this and that those owners are going to agree to allow the utilities, otherwise the utilities have to be redesigned.
It's purely speculative, it's wishful thinking, yeah.
Right. And then the second issue is the one you point to with the stormwater, which I think that the applicant and our town engineer have worked very hard on, and I'm sure that the town engineer can speak to that better than I can.
Right, we're gonna get to you, but we're gonna finish talking about easements, so...
But since we have a lawyer here, I always like hearing from the lawyers.
We defer to the counsel.
The lawyers get paid to speak, right?
Lawyer speaking, yeah.
Just for the record, is it Jacob Amir Zarin?
Whoever guesses what my profession is.
Jacob Amir Zarin Steinmetz, I'm pleased to be here before your board. I came in a little bit recently on this for the purpose of trying to structure the utility easement and the declaration for stormwater management. So we put that together and sent it to Noel, got very helpful, good comments back, supplementing, adding information that needs to be put in there. Just legally, what is interesting here, and, and Michael and I were talking about it earlier today, you know, the, these lines have existed for 70 years, it looks like, although there's no paper that seems to suggest that, I'm not sure how long.
Not the sanitary line, that's new.
Not the sanitary, but the utility line is, the drainage line has been there. So the sanitary line is, maybe that is subject to, to an easement that's necessary, but the drainage line has been there. So, it's, it's sort of, the, the wording here is, is interesting, right? It may not necessarily be an easement agreement that we need to get from the neighbor, there may be existing easement either by prescriptive or something else, since it's been there for 70 years. What we're, what we're talking about is papering it, I guess, for access onto the neighboring property in order to improve that existing drainage line. So technically speaking, and, and I gotta look at it a little bit more, it, it may not necessarily be an easement agreement per se installing a new line. It's simply, can I, colloquially, can I come onto your property, open it to replace it?
Bottom line is, it's gotta get done and you're confident it will get done one way or the other.
And an easement is required for the sanitary line that is not existing, there's no, you know, so that is absolutely...
But what form of easement? That's what I'm hearing, like it, it may, there may already be an easement without everyone signing on the dotted line.
Well...
Yeah, maybe.
So, just to be precise, for the drainage, there legally speaking, it would seem to be an easement just by operation of law existing, there may need to be a document in terms of accessing onto it, some kind of permission to access, dig, replace, restore the property. And that's, that's pretty common, that's not so unusual. The sanitary is, because it's new, would be, would be an easement, now there may be legal mechanisms for that. And I just sort of wanna speculate, if we cannot get that, in terms of the drainage easement, we'll use that word, there is always a legal recourse to do that under the real property actions proceeding law, which no one wants to do, it's much easier to do it in terms of, of a, of a document here.
But, but if, if you have to go the legal route, where this project's gonna get slowed down some more, right?
It, it may get slowed down some more, but it's costly to everybody and it's inefficient and it's unnecessary to even do that, and hopefully we don't need, I don't think we will do that. The, the thought that Michael and I had is, if it's possible to have a preliminary approval and have its final subject to the sewer easement, the drainage easement or the drainage access document with the, with the council's approval in terms of language to it, because there's things that we still need to do, as Michael said, go to the health department and to sort of move the process along, if we can do that. And just to caution, if you were to grant preliminary approval, subject to easements and declarations, it could be very carefully worded to say that the town is not opining on the validity of any easements or one way or the other giving credence to it, the town is simply saying, the preliminary subdivision is, is approved subject to very strict conditions. We would like to, to move the process along.
Yeah. I, I would, for easements that are on-site, like the easements that have to go over the new subdivision lots, I think that's a perfectly fine approach. I would not be comfortable making a recommendation to the board to grant an approval that shows utility lines going through an easement over other people's properties when they have not agreed to allow that.
Can I just, I'm just gonna push back just a tiny bit on that. I, I'm, I'm not suggesting that, that this board should say that it's, it's approved. Yes, we're asking for preliminary subdivision approval, but those, those conditions can be very carefully met. One of the other issues is that it's sort of, in a way, it's putting the cart before the horse, right? Because if we don't get the preliminary subdivision approval as to the design, and we're trying to get the easements, then we don't know what may let her happen in terms of an approval. One of the reasons to get a preliminary approval and then do the easements is that we can refer in the easements to the preliminary approval. We know what the specifications are, we know what the designs are, we know where it's gonna go. So that's kind of one of the reasons why we would, we would, we would do it in that order.
Yeah.
And, and the health department also needs it.
I don't know that we need a signed and filed easement to move forward, but I mean, we received, the owner of Five Duluth came into the planning department and said she was not aware of this and has not agreed to this and needs more information about it. And in those facts and circumstances, I think it's premature to consider a resolution.
So, back in, at the February meeting, the, both neighbors from 86 Howard and Five Duluth were here, and we had an extensive discussion about the drain lines and they know that the drain lines exist, they've called the town a few times when they saw there was standing water, so they know those lines are there.
Yeah.
We're requesting also preliminary subdivision because when I go to the county for the health department, the health department might not want the sewer to go through that way and they want me to go back out onto Tuckahoe. So, like Jacob said, we're putting the cart before the horse. If I can't get to the health department and get their terminology or decision or whatever, I'm gonna have to come back here and say, we're not putting the sewer there. So I, I kinda need to, at this point, give me the boost to go to the health department and see what direction, because they won't even look at it without something from you saying, yes, we're okay with the concept, to go have a discussion with the health department. I can't even get to that point.
But because we don't have feedback from these owners, we don't know if this is a realistic option, and I think the health department from my conversations is gonna want some certainty that you have that right to install those lines.
They might not even want the sewer to go that way, they might want us to put pumps and go out on Tuckahoe.
Right. And again, I'm not saying that we necessarily need a signed and filed easement, but we needed to come further with showing some kind of agreement and willingness of those owners to participate in this.
Is it, just, just, just two thoughts number one, I was just at the health department regarding another municipality's preliminary subdivision plan. They, and, and there were some issues in, in terms of an easement in the back, and I won't bore this board with it, but they didn't, they didn't, the health department didn't concern themselves with those issues. They just needed a, a preliminary subdivision from the planning board, from which I appeared, in order for the county to, to proceed. I agree, Noel, completely in the sense that we don't know what the neighbor may do. The neighbor may, may go on vacation for the next three months, we, we just simply don't know. The problem is, is that without getting, I think, without getting some kind of a preliminary approval, as, as carefully worded as it needs to be, we're sort of at a loss as to what we are going to be talking to the neighbor about. And, and maybe the nuance here is to say, look, give us, you know, 10 days, let's not wait till the next month to consider it, because as Michael said, you know, we would like to get going with the county, county department of health.
It sounds to me like, I'm grossly oversimplifying this, I'm sure, and I'm not a land use attorney, but I, I think if you get the neighbors, the, the ones who already have pipes going through their property, if you have them sign on in principle, you know, not literally sign a document, but sign on in principle, explain to them what you're intending on doing here, which is simply enhancing what's already existing, which should anure to their benefit, you know, and, and they're on board with that concept, then I think that's the time to come back to us.
And adding the sanitary sewer line.
Yes, exactly. That seems to me to be the way to put the horse before the cart.
So would that allow us to look at a preliminary subdivision plot? I mean, first, I've never heard of...
So, so we're looking at, so, right, so we've been reviewing the plan, and if we had a conceptual approval, you could consider moving forward with a resolution for preliminary approval? We would just recommend not doing that until we have some indication from those property owners.
Have we done preliminary subdivision approvals previously?
Yes, for, so typically, we have smaller subdivisions, we do preliminary and final at the same time, but for one of the size, we would do preliminary, which would have conditions that the applicant would have to satisfy, then they have to come back for a final, and we would check that those conditions have been satisfied, and then, and then they can proceed to have their plat signed.
Got it. So, that's how we normally do it, so let's do it again. But the only concern, my main concern is, as you said, neighbors might not even know about this, even though they might have heard about it, so I think they need to be made aware of what is in front of them.
As I understand, the, the owner of Five Duluth was here at the last meeting in February...
But the word easement, I don't think it was used.
Right. She was objecting to the stormwater.
She didn't have no idea what you were doing.
Yeah.
It was all discussed. Yeah, I know, but she's, well, she didn't have counsel with her, okay? So, she needs to be told again then.
Yeah, her question in, in February was, I see the easements, it's crossing my property, how is that happening? And then it turned into a discussion of stormwater management, and we never actually discussed the sanitary sewer line over her property.
Yeah, I recall that as well.
No, that's absolutely...
I think, I think, I think your homework assignment is going to be to line up preliminary approvals, let's use that term, you know, non-legally binding, but, but you, you gotta line up these, the people you need to line up, get them on board with, with the concept, come back to us with, with an indication that we've got all the necessary parties agreeing to this, it's gonna happen, and, and at that point, we should be able to give you what you need to paper it, and, and then we'll continue to move forward. Is that, does that make sense?
Yes, that's exactly right.
If, if we're able, if we're able to get that writing from the neighbors, whether in the form of a signed agreement or a letter of intent, something that is clearly stated, and that, as I understand, unless someone corrects me, that's the only thing that remains, can this move to final approval?
We have to talk to our civil consultant.
Right.
And see what he says. So, stand by.
Rick Bolander, K C J Consulting. I'll remove myself from the legal aspect of this and the engineering aspect.
Yeah, save the day for us.
Was that?
Save the day for us.
Yes. From an engineering standpoint, from, from a stormwater standpoint, it's, it's obviously a, a vast improvement from what's there right now. We have, the project engineer's been very proactive with working with us to iron out the stormwater design. A lot of work has been put into the stormwater pollution prevention plan, which we have a preliminary copy of that we are currently reviewing, along with the sanitary sewer report. All indications are good, it's quite a big document, so it's taken some time to review it, obviously. But again, like I said, a lot of the work was done prior to that document being drafted between our office and the project engineer, so the trajectory is good right now, at least from an engineering standpoint.
Yeah, that was easy. Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm not gonna overthink this, then the answer to your question is, that seems to be the only thing holding us up. And with that case, with that being said, I, I guess it's up to you guys to come back with those agreements. I guess we review them, we as in the planning board reviews them, and then they come back here, we said we've seen it, and then we can make the, those preliminary sub...
Correct.
Division. Okay.
Okay.
It's a good plan.
This is an open public hearing?
Oh yeah, this is a public hearing. This is a public hearing. If there's any comments from the public about this, now's the time. This is application 21-17, 15 Tuckahoe Avenue subdivision, it's an open public hearing. Since there doesn't seem to be, to be any comments, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on application 21-17, 15 Tuckahoe, to the planning board's October 23rd, 2025 meeting, at which point we will see you guys.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Great. Did you have something?
Anything more?
No, no, I just, I had a question for Michael.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening. The next application is 25-27, 10 Joyce Road.
My name is Yor Biba from Brandis Architects, here with Len Brandis, representing our client at 10 Joyce Road. The scope of work is to renovate an existing single-family residence, which has not been done any work on it, like, for a very long time, and we want to update it. The proposed work is to propose a two-story addition at the rear and a second-story addition at the front where the roof is, is like very low. I would like to show some photos of the existing. This is the front area that I was talking about, where we're gonna be increasing the roof and adding the second-story addition, and this is the rear, where we have this L shape, we're going to put the two-story...
Could you just speak into the mic a little bit closer?
Sure. Yeah, so, and I'll show the floor plans as well, which will help. We're basically proposing a, a nice open-story, two-story foyer area right where we enter, where we're, then we're keeping the existing living room as is, but we're expanding the family room and the kitchen area on the second floor. Let me go to the second floor. On the second floor, we're proposing, we're renovating all the bedrooms, basically, and we're proposing a new primary bedroom where we're gonna have cathedral ceiling, walk-in closets and a nice bathroom on it. The other bedrooms will have two bathrooms, which the one, one bedroom's gonna be sharing And we also were, at the architecture review board, where they gave us some comments, we got approved with a few comments, and we already did revise everything, where they asked us to fix a bit the trim by the two-story foyer here, and we, we were asked to remove a small window on the front, which we already did that. We are, we're also showing a light by the front entrance, which we were asked. Also on the rear, we're just fixing a bit the grill work, and we were asked to, we previously had like a three-panel sliding door here, but they asked us to make it into four to match the second story, second floor, primary bedroom door. So there are like very minimal changes, which are already reflected here on the render, and, yeah, we're open to questions.
It's stone, right?
Yes, we are, we also have some samples.
It's real stone or, or fake? It's real stone or fake stone?
Well, it's the stone.
Oh, that's real stone, no. Or is that? No, it doesn't really matter, but that's what it looks like.
It's like granite.
Yeah. That's very nice. So there's no other stone on the street?
I'm sorry?
I said, there's no other stone facades on the street.
No, no, there's just only this front area. Where is the two-story foyer area?
No, my point is that there's no other houses on Joyce Road that have stone facades.
They do have.
Do they? That's what I wanna see. What's adjacent to, do you have pictures of adjacents?
We do have, yeah.
Can I see that?
The neighbors?
Yeah.
Yep, the neighbors.
Here's one house. Is this house here, which has a stone, like, only in one story, though, but?
The whole first story has stone across that area.
Yeah.
Yeah, your name, sir?
I'm sorry.
Just state your name for the record.
I'm at Brandis.
Okay, got it, thank you. Yeah, because with it, there's a court reporter who's gonna be taking down the transcript, and she'll hear a different voice, so.
So I can look over his shoulder and see what the adjacent story, you can point it out. What are the two, uh, what are the two houses on either side of the one you're renovating on your picture?
I'm sorry, say again?
The house you're working on, the house to the left and the house to the right, which are the ones there? Can you point them out?
This one is to the left. That's to the right, and this one is to the left, and this one is across the street.
It's to the left, it's to the right. Uh, I don't want the one across the street, what's the one to the right? You said the one to the left is which one?
Which one is this one? Yeah, this one should be to the left.
Okay, and which is the one to the right?
This one to the right.
Got it.
And this one across.
So you're not changing the mass of the building in the front? What we're gonna see from the street isn't really changing, right? It has a different shape, you've got the new addition, but the mass is the same?
No, we're keeping the same footprint in the front, we're just like adding the proposed, like, a second-story addition by the roof area, and on the back, we're only closing that L-shaped area, which is this part here, where we're gonna have a new kitchen and the new primary bedroom upstairs. And, uh, also, this one does not have a basement, so we really need the room, and we're still under 2,300 square feet, as per FAR. We do not need any variance or anything, so we meet the zoning code like 100%.
I think it's a very nice renovation.
Thank you.
I like it, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a big improvement from what's there. I don't deny it, yeah. Yeah, what's there has been run down, it needs to be, needs to be redone. Okay, cool. Any other comments, guys?
No.
Nope.
The public hearing on this is open.
Yeah, we're gonna see if there's any comments from neighbors, especially those neighbors. So then I make a motion to open the public hearing, application 252710 Joyce Road.
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
No comments, then I make a motion to close the public hearing on this application?
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything we should do? Are there any conditions or anything we should make?
Uh, we don't have any to propose, other than our general, everything has to be constructed in compliance with the plans.
Yeah, landscaping, all the rest of that. Are there gonna be any landscaping changes, or?
Uh, no.
Yeah, uh, for this addition, we did not ask for a landscape plan.
Yeah, it just stays what's there.
And, and were there suggested renovations or revisions to the plan made by the Architectural Review Board? Did they suggest anything?
Yes, and they were all picked up in the plan.
And they were all picked up. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I meant. Was there anything that they suggested that you didn't?
Yeah, a few very minor things, which we addressed.
Yes, perfect.
Minor but necessary.
Yep.
Yeah, cool. So then I make a motion to, what am I doing? I make a motion to approve application 252710 Joyce Road.
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice, thank you. The next application is 25-
We're just gonna go to Two Howell Place, um, next, um, because that one also had the town engineer's review.
For Howell?
Worked for Howell, yeah.
Oh, we'll go straight to that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So the next application is 2558 Two Howell, and, so we're gonna start with Rick, once he's up here.
Good evening, board members. Adamo Mariano from Community Designs and Engineering, and yes, we are proposing, on behalf of the applicant, David Hannan, we are proposing a new single-family dwelling at Two Howell Place. Right now, the existing lot is situated in the R6 zoning district. It's a vacant lot, uh, there's nothing that's really on the site, uh, just a few trees, so just to go over that first. We are proposing to remove two trees, pretty significant trees in the front. One is on the property and one is just off the property, so we'll have to get highway department approval for that. As part of doing that, we are replanting two trees on the front, as you see in your packet, there's a landscape, a full landscape plan that was provided by Bob Tramontano, so there'll be two, sort of, call it replacement trees, cherry trees in the front, and then full landscaping, you know, around the exist, around the proposed dwelling and around the property lines as far as, you know, evergreen screening in the back and on the side. So the biggest part about this proposal, it's a corner lot, so it's situated on Howell Place, as you mentioned, and Highland Avenue. In its first, you know, overall design of the dwelling, we wanted it to face Howell Place as far as the entrance and the driveway because of safety reasons, as far as Highland being, you know, a pretty busy street and cars are going pretty fast up and down there. So, um, similar to, I think it's, uh, One Howell, the house is sort of a mixture between One Howell and Four Howell, where as far as One Howell, most of the dwelling itself faces, it's situated on the corner, but it faces Howell Place. So the driveway, there's a two-car-wide driveway, and there's two car spots located in the garage that's in the basement, and as you walk up the steps to the left, you know, the main floor has, uh, living space and bedrooms upstairs. As far as the overall site planning, again, we did perform a site test that the town engineer came out to witness, and all of the new impervious surfaces will be captured onsite with stormwater mitigation. There was, you know, suitable soils for that, so we have, you know, dry wells situated in the front, sort of by Highland Avenue, and in the backyard, but really the sideyard, where the patio is located out the left side of the, the house. Go into, so, basically in here, the streetscape, again, as mentioned, to the right is Highland Avenue, so there's no house there, but to the left, uh, I forget, I think that's one, sorry, go back to the map. Uh, Four Howell, yes. One Howell is across the street, Four Howell is to the left, and that has a similar situation where the driveway, yeah, as you enter, is in the basement, similar to ours, although ours, there's not really a very high retaining wall on the side, it's only about two and a half feet, so that helps with, you know, sort of winters and shoveling and snowplowing and whatnot. Then just the elevations, pretty standard materials, as you see throughout a lot of the new homes. Hardy plank siding, it's sort of a light gray color, and your basic Anderson windows, white windows, sort of off the black and white trends, so the owner wants to go more of a traditional-style home. This, on the right side elevation, that faces Highland, so we have shutters basically facing Howell, and then shutters facing, um, Highland, because it's, again, a corner lot, so we try to dress up both of those elevations.
Do the colors on that, um, on those elevation match what's proposed?
Some, the print is a little different, so it's not exact. It's a lighter gray, so it's a pearl gray, Hardy plank, I could bring the samples to the next board meeting, but it's a lighter gray.
What's shown, or what?
Which, no, what's shown is darker, the actual thing is like a little bit lighter.
Oh, it's actually lighter?
Yeah.
Oh, that looks pretty light, okay.
Similar, but.
And you said black roof?
What's that?
Black, black shingle roof?
Uh, black shutters, yeah. Black shutters, charcoal roof, and, other than that, just a, sort of like a gray brick chimney on the left side.
Okay.
That I could bring samples as well.
It's not standard, it's actually very nice. You said standard, no, it's actually very handsome.
Yeah, I mean, sure.
Yeah, it's well done.
You know, then obviously the AZAC, you know, siding, white trim along the windows and the soffits.
Well, I always ask about the chimney, what's, is the chimney a new brick chimney?
It'll be a brick chimney on the left side.
Just standard?
It's not red brick, it's like a gray brick, I could bring a sample of that as well, it's like a gray brick. Glengarry, it's called Nob Hill, but it's like a gray shade sort of brick.
All the way up?
All the way up, yeah.
Does it contrast on the siding color? It, it looks like-
A little bit, yeah, it's like, it's like a lighter material brick, but again, yeah, it's on the left side of the house, so not super, you know, visible.
I guess we have to hear, because I heard you wrote a memo. What happens to, um, do we have a site plan and as far as, as far as coltacs and?
Yes, and as I mentioned, this overall site plan shows where, it's kind of color-coordinated, but it basically shows where the roof areas are gonna drain to, and the coltacs designated for those areas, so you sort of have like three broken-up options, where the left side and the patio go to a row of coltech units on the left side of the property, the driveway goes to one sort of just in the front on the right side, next to, and then this portion of the roof goes to another set of units next to it.
Okay, I don't have any more questions. So I think you did review this? I heard there was a memo, I don't think we had, was that circulated, or?
I didn't get, no.
I usually read all your memos, but I didn't see this one, so maybe you could summarize what's in it? Oh, you have it? How come you have it right now?
Yeah, interesting.
I didn't get it, you printed it out.
That's fine, sure.
Rick Bolander, K C J Consulting. When you do get the memo, you'll see, it looks like quite a bit, a lot of comments, but it's all very minor.
Yeah, thank you.
I just wanted, didn't wanna let Mr. Mariano off the hook that easy. There's a few things that just need clarification on, uh, just the patio drainage, I just wanna make sure that, um, that's getting captured in the, in the proposed stormwater practices. Just some, some number clarification, uh, between the impervious calculations and the stormwater calculations, but it's not off by much. But, like I said, really just nitpicky stuff, but the, you know, the design is good, um, so that, that's really it.
That sounds like a thumbs up from you.
Yes, absolutely.
That was, yeah, you said it's just little details that'll be picked up on the drawings.
Yeah, and it's, the information's probably there, it's just clarification from, from Adamo, probably.
So we'll just make that a condition of the approval? If, when we, okay. Oh, public hearing.
This is actually, was submitted for a preliminary review, it wasn't noticed as a public hearing, this applicant still has to go to the Architectural Review Board, um, so the purpose of tonight was just to introduce the layout, hear the initial engineering comments, and to make the referral to the Architectural Review Board, and then they'll notice for a public hearing when they return, if you're ready to send it to the Architectural Review Board.
Sure, that works for me. Okay with that, guys?
I'm good with that.
So then I make a motion to refer application 25-58 to Howell Place to the Architectural Review Board and to schedule a public hearing on this application for its next appearance before the planning board, whenever that may be.
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Ran back to this agenda. So the next application, next application is 25-48, 25 Stratford Road. Thanks, Rick.
Hello, um, my name is Karen, I work with the architect Eric Jacobson, uh, it's his anniversary today, so I'm just filling in for him.
Karen, your last name?
Oh, yes, Young, is my last name.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I'm here for 25 Stratford Road, sorry. This is a one-story, oh, sorry.
Can you move that mic a little bit closer? The mic works, we still can't hear you, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I'll, I'll do that closer. It's a one-family residence, um, it's on a corner lot, so it had bought Stratford Road and Vassar Place, uh, so this lot, even though the front, uh, front door is right over here along Stratford Road, but, um, according to the town, uh, this is actually the front yard right over here along Vassar Place. Uh, so we're proposing a one-story front addition, and this is for the home, uh, sorry, I'm on behalf, I'm here on behalf of the homeowners, Adam and Lindsay Harvey, they have a son with mobility issues, uh, so this is to provide him a bedroom on the first floor and also a bathroom. As part of this proposal, we're also asking to put in a lift, uh, so this lift would allow for the wheelchair to come up to this elevated walkway, uh, just to be at, at level with the first floor right over here. And then I'll, we were at ARB, um, uh, last ARB meeting, uh, we received a comment back just to provide the colors of the doors, uh, so I just wanted to provide that here. I guess it's within your package as well, but just the front door is going to be a navy color, uh, the doors, um, which I'll bring up the elevations, but the doors, just at the new storage area, uh, the old garage area are going to be white, and there's a new rear door that's going to be put in just to replace an existing door, and that's going to be white as well. I'm just gonna turn the page. Yep, so just, uh, wanted to make sure we addressed that. Okay. Uh, so this is the proposed elevations at the front, uh, you can see the one-story addition, uh, and just how it connects into the new house, or to the existing house, the new addition connects into the existing house, and, um, it's going to have the same visual aspects, so it'll have the same vinyl siding, the same asphalt roofing, and, um, the new windows will match existing, they'll be vinyl Harvey windows. Okay, uh, so this is showing the left elevation and also the right elevation, uh, just over here, you can see the proposed lift, uh, that we're proposing out at the front, right by the walkway at the driveway, uh, it's going to be a Bruno 3,100 series outdoor vertical lift. And then, I guess, um, if I, I'm not sure if I need to address stormwater, but I can, no, okay. Uh, we're just proposing a coltech system.
Right. So, um, can you, there was an elevation there, could you somehow flip to that and just tuck it behind so we can talk about it a little bit?
Yeah.
The one, the, the front elevation?
The front elevation.
Yeah, just.
Okay, that's existing?
Yeah, that's good, just tuck that down so you can point. Yeah, yeah, so maybe you could just explain, and you did, what's, what all of the materials are?
Oh, yeah, sure.
If you, if you move that forward, you could tuck that behind, so you could use your hands. There you go. Yep.
Okay, thanks. Uh, yeah, sure, so, uh, it's gonna have new vinyl siding over here, it's going to match the existing vinyl siding, uh, which we have as a Mastik Ovation Woodgrain Double Four in silver gray, and then, um, just asphalt roofing to match. It's a dark color, it's, um, we believe like the darkest one from Timberline, but we just have to verify it some more. Um, and then, uh, here are the windows, the Harvey windows, uh, they're going to be double-hung windows matching, uh, just the house, the original windows at the house. Uh, we have, uh, two casements going in to replace, or two casements being put in the back right here, and then on the side elevation, you can see we're also doing a picture window and a, um, and a simulated, uh, meeting rail double-hung window, so, or simulated meeting rail double-hung window, which is actually a casement window, but it looks like a double-hung to mimic the other side.
What's the, uh, what is that elevation right there? The one on the bottom of the page? What's that material? The one that looks like a big blank wall? The bottom one?
The one at the walkway?
Yeah, the bottom, yeah, what's that?
Yeah, sure. So that's going to be Trex, it's going to be, uh, the white vinyl Trex railing, and then, uh, they picked out a, um, it's also gonna have lattice along the bottom as well, and then they picked out a Trex Rainier Trescent Lineage Decking, which is like this- And then they picked out a Trex Rainier Trescent Lineage Decking, which is like this grayish color.
Okay. What color is the new siding?
Uh, the new siding is going to match existing. So, um, what's at the existing house, it's going to match that. Let me see if I have a better picture. It's just a gray color. So just right over here on the side. Yeah, so that new addition will match that.
Okay, understood. Great. Does anybody have any questions? No.
Sounds fine to me.
So as far as the site plan and everything, I guess if he looks at, uh, Rick looks at everything?
Sure, the field inspector will review this one.
Yeah, no need to, okay. I must unstand by. We're gonna see if there's any comments from the public, so, don't go anywhere. So, uh, what are we doing? Uh, I make a motion to open the public hearing on application twenty-five dash forty-eight, twenty-five Stratford Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No comments from the public, so I make a motion to close the public hearing on this application, twenty-five dash forty-eight, twenty-five Stratford Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm okay with the application, so I'm gonna, I think we're all okay with the application, so I make a motion to approve application twenty-five forty-eight, twenty-five Stratford Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well done.
You're good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Have a nice evening. The next application is twenty-five, it's gonna be a joint public hearing, since they're both the same site, twenty-five dash forty-one, three-six-seven White Plains Road. That's for the site plan, and twenty-five dash thirty-seven, um, White Plains Road, that's for the occupancy, sweat four-four-zero. So, let's do the site plan first.
Um, good evening, Chairman, members of the board, Steven Accinelli. Short, we can, uh, um, the presentation is basically the same for both, or we could-
Just go for it then, whatever you got.
Thank you. Um, my name is Steve Accinelli from Venneruso, Curdo, Schwartz &amp; Curdo. On behalf of the owner and the applicant, here with me this evening is representatives from the tenant operator, as well as the owner of the property. Also Shaheen Badali, who is the project architect, is here as well. And Brian Dempsey from DTS Providence, he's our traffic and parking consultant. We are here tonight seeking your board's approval for a special use permit for a recreation and family entertainment facility indoors, and also for site plan approval. This matter was before the zoning board, uh, in, at the September meeting, uh, for area variances, seeking relief for two area variances arising from a use, the use-specific criteria. Those relate to hours of operation and the setbacks. We are expecting a resolution from the zoning board in the October meeting. So we will be back before the zoning board then. We have been in discussions with Noel, and, uh, our traffic consultant has been working with the towns engineer regarding pack, parking and traffic concerns. The towns consultant, uh, issued a report. Our consultant, uh, issued a report, and they have been communicating in that regard, and, um, Brian is here to answer any questions that the board may have, uh, in connection with traffic and parking. The building, three-sixty-seven White Plains Road, consists of an existing building. It was built in nineteen fifty-six. There have been no changes, uh, to that building since it was initially constructed. That was the former Saveway Dry Cleaners on White Plains Road in the corner of Merritt Avenue. Uh, the Dry Cleaners vacated earlier this year, and the property has been vacant ever since. The applicant is proposing no changes to the property. Uh, the building is going to remain as is. Um, the only work being performed are interior renovations associated with the tenant's specific use. There have been other, uh, general site improvements, uh, to the building, new roofing. Uh, the, the parking area was paved, it has not yet been striped. Um, waiting to get through this review and approval process. So there have been some general improvements, uh, to the area in preparation for the proposed, uh, use. Um, we are going to be providing twenty-eight parking spaces on-site. Uh, there are two, uh, two curb cuts, one, uh, on White Plains Road, and one also off of Merritt. Um, with the board's permission, I can turn it over to the architect, who can walk the board through the site plan.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, this is Shaheen Badali. Is there a way to possibly plug in, uh, an HDMI cable?
Yeah, there should be a cable on the podium.
It says I'm sharing. I'm sure, oh, there you go, okay. Alright, so we have before you hear the site plan for three-sixty-seven White Plains Road. As Mr. Accinelli stated, there's effectively no work that we're proposing to the site except for the striping of the spaces. Uh, there is the removal of a utility pole in the rear yard as well. Uh, the existing trash location, the existing door access to the building, the existing walkways, none of that are being modified, they're all being maintained. Um, I do wanna just offer one port of clarification, that there are actually two, um, there, there's kind of two curb cuts along Route twenty-two, so there's one here, uh, towards the bottom right of the page here, and then there's another one here as well. Uh, so, so, so there is an in and out along Route twenty-two. And then the other existing curb cut here is up on Merritt Avenue. Um, the site is effectively, uh, laid out so that there's, you know, accessible parking in the front and the rear, uh, and, and access to the site can be provided from both points. And with that, thank you.
Hold on, can I ask one question? You said, removal of utility pole?
That's correct. So there is an existing pole in the rear yard here, I'm just gonna zoom in to show you where it is. Um, and that's, that's the utility pole within our site, which we're gonna be removing in order to provide the maneuverability of the spaces back here.
What's it doing? What is the utility pole doing right now?
It currently has two wires, it appears. One would be, uh, an electric wire, the other one appears to be most likely coaxial cable, and they're feeding the City MD building. I do wanna make the board aware that both buildings do have, uh, the same ownership, uh, and we are coordinating the relocation of that wire.
So, that'll need to be shown as well, on your site plan, if it's crossing this site.
You, you're gonna locate a new pole someplace else to move?
We're, we're not proposing to relocate any poles right now.
But you're taking one down?
Correct.
So you have to show where it's going? Or eventually, you plan on doing that, right?
So, so what, so what we're doing is we're exploring, uh, the options that are available. That pole will be removed. And there are essentially three options. Option number one is to, um, run the wire directly from the, the street pole across to the City MD building, supported by a steel cable. Second option is to run the wire from the pole on the street to our building, the subject building. Essentially bounce it off that building and then go to the City MD, and alternatively, um, relocate the wiring underground. So we have three options that we're looking at to facilitate the removal of that utility pole that's in the basic, middle of the parking area in the back. It's been, it's been a problem, uh, for, for many years, so we're, we're taking this opportunity to, uh, eliminate the problem. If you, if you look at the pole, it's been tapped a number of times, so it's a good idea, uh, anyway, to get it out of the way and facilitate the, the transmission of power alternatively.
Seems like we should, we should get an idea of what we're doing before we go much further. So, we made, um, we asked another applicant previously about where the wire is, what side, show it, so-
Correct.
Should we do the same thing here?
Yeah, we should see how that's being relocated. I didn't realize that actually had utilities. I thought it was not in service anymore. But it, it, it is providing electricity, so how, how you're rerouting it should, should definitely be shown. Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I don't know if you're gonna get a new pole in there very quickly. So I think that's, uh, we need to understand that. Is that, does the fire department look at this app? They look at all applications?
So we referred this application to the fire department, and, uh, the fire department did not have any concerns for this one, uh, in, in addition to the comments that our towns traffic engineer raised. He agreed with those comments, uh, but other than that, did not have any concerns.
Okay, we'll hear what you have to say before we continue. Okay. So, I stopped the conversation because I asked about the pole. You were gonna come up next?
Well, yeah, the license, uh, I'm the investor in the project. I just wanted to make a-
Yeah.
Yeah, so there, uh, while he's coming to the podium, just to, to talk about the two aspects of this property, so we're talking about the, the site planning issues that we're, we're just talking about right now, and then it'll be a special permit for the recreation family indoor for a small gym. Uh, that's the second part of this application.
Okay.
And, uh, and so I think that's what they're-
Sorry, could you just stand by then? I think we're gonna come to you after we finish the whole site plan stuff. You represent the tenant, right? You represent the club. Okay, could you hold off? We're just gonna keep talking about telephone poles and poles for a few more minutes. So, could you guys talk to our consultant about his, uh, our consultant about his, his comments on the site plan? Could you come up? Did you?
Sure.
Do you have any, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we wanna hear-
Do you wanna hear from the applicant's consultant in the first instance about the design?
Well, I think, I think the majority of those comments relate to traffic and parking. So, I can have my consultant address those, or if you'd like, Mr., um, the towns consultant to speak first.
Oh, he's your civil consultant, not your architectural consultant. Okay, yes, we do wanna hear from him. Yes, we wanna hear from-
Yeah, so they have a tra, they're a traffic engineer and there's, they're-
Okay, you're up. I'm gonna have name tags.
Good evening, for the record, Brian Dempsey. I'm a licensed professional engineer with the firm DTS Providence Design Engineering. As stated, um, Mr. Greeley has sent us a letter, a re, letter. We've gone through, we've been talking to him about the responses for it. They couldn't be officially submitted before the meeting, so they'll be submitted afterwards. Basically, was, was discussed before, is there are two curb cuts on White Plains Road, two curb cuts on Merritt. Um, I know they said, mentioned one, there actually are two there. And the state is, as stated, has been the same as since nineteen fifty-five. Removing this pole was something we had recommended, um, 'cause it, if you ever drive by there, you know, it's just sitting in the middle of the, the parking lot. So, it'll be very helpful that, um, that that pole goes away. There is no easements or any agreements between this and the adjacent property. Both are currently owned by the same owner. That's the, the, um, the medical facility, I forget the day. So, there are some people who, who will come through here, um, from that facility, and some from here that may go out there. Right here is Merritt Avenue and then Main Street, so you have the split in the road here. You have this, intersection's under traffic signal control. Um, we were asked to look at the crash history there, which we did, there has not been a significant crash history at, at the intersection here.
It's 'cause it never moves. The traffic just sits.
It helps though. And some of the other things Mr. Greeley asked us to look at is circulation through the site. There is park, some parking out in front. More of the parking is in the back of the building, consistent with how it is today. Um, this is just showing the path of a refuse truck that you come in, you come in the driveway here, and would come out, um, comes out at the next driveway to the, here, and can continue on. When the refuse truck is there, it's gonna be generally early in the morning with limited traffic at, at the site. So it, it will not have a problem, um, traveling through.
By the way, for future reference, I can see that you have the DTS Providence in, in colored ink. Uh, it probably would be helpful to show the path in something other than gray.
Well, this is an enlargement of something, yeah, we could, we could do it in-
I can follow it, but it's just, you know, I like a little color in life.
We were also asked just to show some patterns of how cars can circulate and get into the parking. They do have different options, 'cause everything will be two-way. This one just shows a car coming in, coming in this, uh, northern driveway, coming into the la, shows it can come in, park easily in the last parking spot there. And then on the way out, um, and this is the advantage of having the curb cuts, it does have, is a car would back out of this spot, it can come out here and come back out on twenty-two. That way it's not going through the neighborhood on Merritt Avenue. It keeps people out of, out of the residential area. Um, and that's the advantage of having this two-way, and the cars. This project will not generate much traffic, it'll be similar traffic or less traffic than what the, um, Dry Cleaners had generated in the past. The hours, um, they, they will open, I think it's-
Six.
Six, six in the morning. Classes, and do you want me to get into the operations of it, or did you wanna hear?
No, just six, and when do they stop? When's the-
When's the-
About seven-thirty P.M. So earlier than permitted times on the media news.
Okay.
So, during each, they'll get into more detail, but there's two staff, uh, two staff working at any one time. The classes are limited in size, where you sign up by an app, and so it's capped. Usually between ten and, and twenty people i- in a class. Um, the classes go for forty minutes, so then that class will finish. Uh, next class comes in at the next hour. So that'll limit the impact some parking. We do show that there's sufficient parking on the site. Uh, Mr. Greeley has asked us to add some additional signage, some additional striping, um, just to clarify some things and some of the interconnection with, um, the adjacent property. That stuff will be done. Also, to put in a couple no-left-turn signs here, since Merritt Avenue is one-way going away from, uh, twenty-two. Will, any questions at the same, or after?
How many spots? Twenty-eight.
So, are you proposing to get rid of the curb cuts on Merritt in this option?
No, no, the curb cuts stay there. Um, this was just showing that instead of the car coming out onto Merritt and going through the neighborhood, 'cause it's one-way, it'll come through, stay on the property, and we'll put it in the color next time. Um, we'll, can, can come out and then come out on the twenty-two and come to-
Oh, put striping and arrows to get them to bring out the twenty-two? Yeah, 'cause the, if you go down Merritt, which I've done many times, it's a very tight road and lots of turns.
Right, so we wanna limit anything on there.
Yeah, I don't know how you do. So, that was my one question. The other question is urgent care next door. Right, that whole, that whole parking lot is one big parking lot. There's no division between the two, even though it's the same owner, it's two different usages.
Right, and we have sufficient park, it, it'll operate similar to how it is now.
Well, it doesn't really operate very well. I, I mean, people from urgent care are gonna, you know, turn there, go that way, there's nothing dividing the two, aren't there?
That's, that's why Mr. Greeley's asked us to add additional signage. Noel, and when we first met on the project, um, wanted us to analyze it, and that's why it's cut off in case somewhere down the line, a fence goes up, a wall goes up, and the properties are separated. So our traffic study looked at it as a separate facility. 'Cause there are no agreements, no access agreements or anything else. No shared parking, nothing between the two officially.
Are you saying that's the condition of your traffic study with two separate?
We, we were asked to look at it as a, a separate uni- We were asked to look at it as a separate unit in case somewhere a new owner comes in, puts a fence along here, unless you can't get through that way, or a car can't come through, through on the bottom.
Yeah, the original site plan showed this property and then some of the urgent care property. But since that property wasn't the subject of the site plan, that wasn't included in the application, we asked the applicant for the purposes of showing the site plan to just show what is the subject of this application and not to take into account relying on that.
Just eliminate it.
Right, but we did ask for, you know, based on Mr. Greeley's comments, we did ask for a broader plan so that you could see exactly what you're asking for, how this overlay will compare.
He's going to put that on, on the broader plan.
Sure, let's keep going.
Okay, so what's in yellow is essentially this site with Merritt Avenue to the left, twenty-two on the bottom. And then WebMD is the property on the right. So there's also curb cut for them on twenty-two. But as you said, you know, some cars will come in, park at WebMD, and then they will come out through here and exit through this dri, one of the driveways for this facility. There is nothing stopping them. So we're going to, we're working with your consultant on what type signage he wants and what he recommends with the signage and striping in that area. Just to get some more control in the area and such.
Okay, so as far as parking goes, we don't have to really talk about it. There's more inadequate parking. Do we need a variance for parking or we're good?
No, we have.
You have.
Sorry, how big are the classes, though? You said there's twenty-eight parking spots, and how big are the classes going to be?
They're generally between ten and twenty and two employees.
So twenty-two people at most for twenty-eight spots? And then how far apart are the classes from each other?
The classes are forty, they'll get into more.
Okay, I'm just saying that might impact the amount of.
The classes are forty minutes and then they would, and then you have the turnover.
The last thing you want is overflow of parking, and then people are parking at the urgent care place, nobody can go to urgent care, and then it's going to be a whole mishmash.
And then just one other point. This use, the special permit use that you're reviewing takes up about three-quarters of the building. And then there's a quarter of the building left that the applicant has just indicated as parking to put a permissible use. There's no tenant for that space yet, but there is some additional space in the building in addition to the proposed fitness facility.
So there'll be more people parking.
And so we included that in the parking calculations that Greeley reviewed. It would have to be a very small office, two or three employee type thing. It's a little over a thousand square feet.
So I'd feel more comfortable right now if we hear from Mr. Greeley, so he could give us his thoughts, please.
Just one more comment.
Steve, if you would, grab in the mic.
So just one more comment that the board should be aware of. The facility opens at six AM. At around ten-thirty or so, they will plan on closing. So they will be closed from around eleven o'clock till five-thirty PM. So their, their core business is going to be from six AM till about eleven AM, closed from the middle of the day, and then reopening for the evening hours beginning around four-thirty to seven-thirty. So the property will essentially be closed, not in use, between eleven-thirty and four-thirty Monday through Friday. And then also on Saturdays, there'll be a small, Sunday's a small gap in the middle of the day. So it's not, the facility will not be open from six AM throughout the entirety of the day till seven-thirty. There will be a gap of hours in the middle of the day that it will not be open for business.
Thank you for pointing that out. I wasn't aware of that, but it's maybe not totally pertinent, but it's important to know. Okay, cool. So, Mr. Greeley? Thank you.
Again, Philip Greeley from Colliers Engineering and Design. We had prepared a letter with several comments September twelfth. Most of the comments were related to site plan issues. We agree with the removal of the impediment, the utility pole in the rear. I think that has to be, you know, defined a little bit more detail, but that right now is in the middle of the drive aisle of the spaces that are shown on the site plan. In terms of the initial traffic and parking study that Mr. Dempsey's office put together, we had some comments relative to the traffic generation. There's been some new information that has been published relative to that. I think their description of the operation is important because of the nature of turnover. In terms of, in terms of traffic, I think compared to the previous use at its peak times would be similar. In terms of parking, the twenty-eight spaces, based on standards, would meet the demand for this type of facility. But really, the key is the operation, because when you have that turnover time, would be critical. I think what they've described sounds reasonable in terms of the treatment. We have several comments about the circulation, and we were concerned with whether there were easements, because as you pointed out, the site really works as one site with City MD today, because there's no physical separation. As Mr. Dempsey described, if there was put in a physical separation, this site would be able to function because it has the four curb cuts. We do have several recommendations on signing to make sure that that flows properly. We are concerned with some of the spaces. We feel that, I think it's space number one, which is the closest to the southeast corner of the parking area. The drive aisle is narrow in that vicinity, and it's in close proximity to the curb cut on Merritt, closest to twenty-two. And the curb cut on twenty-two, closest to that corner. So we felt that space should be removed, because if you have a vehicle coming in and one trying to exit, it could create a backup. I think the loss of one space in this case is better than having a condition where you have a bottleneck. There are some spaces on the westerly driveway on Merritt Avenue that have a similar situation where a vehicle turning in or a vehicle turning out could potentially be in conflict. However, it's further away from twenty-two. There's adequate room to maneuver there, and we're not as concerned. I think it's there probably more important to have the spaces so that people aren't parking on the street. I think a lot of the signing and other striping comments that we have, we had several, you know, comments, can be worked out with the applicant to make sure that this site can operate independently, but also how it will continue to function in its current relationship with the City MD property. Because you have some blind corners around the side of the building, et cetera. But I think those can all be, you know, worked out with signing and striping. Those were our primary comments. We recommended that the emergency services look at it, just in terms of the circulation, especially with those, that parking space number one on the site plan, because it's very tight in that area. The rest of the comments, we had asked for some accident data. They have put that together. We haven't seen the formal submission, but the information that was compiled addresses that issue. So I can answer any other questions.
So, Mr. Dempsey came up. He said you guys are working together to address all of the comments in your memo. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, so they have prepared a draft response to our comments that he forwarded to me. It's not, hasn't been formally been submitted. I think those comments, you know, his responses are reasonable. We disagree about that one parking space. I think it should be removed. They were trying to keep it, but it's a less than standard drive aisle width if that space remains.
Right, so all the comments that you've made and Mr. Dempsey's responses are work in progress and.
Correct.
I'm confident that it'll be worked out. The one thing you did say just now, like, who did the traffic study with trip generations impact on traffic on Route twenty-two? Or did someone say this use is just no different than what was there previously?
So his, his report was based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers' trip generation data for the retail use and for the fitness facility. That's what was presented in his report. We reviewed that. There's been more recent information that's been published just this month by ITE, which deals with, that's the Institute of Transportation Engineers, that specifies different types of health clubs, fitness clubs. And this would fall more in the category that's in the new manual. In terms of the comparison of those trip generation rates, based on that data, the trip generation would be comparable or less than what the previous retail use would be. The original report did not include any trips for the office space. There's about sixteen hundred square feet. That would be office. So his update is going to address that.
So I'm a little perplexed, although what you said makes perfect sense. I used to go to that dry cleaner.
Yes.
And I know how many people were there, and it was far, 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 far less than what is going to be here.
In terms of.
Address that.
You're talking, in terms of the number of people parked at any one time, would be less. Because the turnover is faster, but if you look at the number of trips that would be generated. So you have, traffic and parking aren't always exactly aligned in terms of the need for parking can be more in a use like this, because the duration is longer. But from a traffic generation standpoint, the number of vehicles coming in and out over the course of an hour would be comparable. At any one time, the previous use would probably show fewer parking spaces than what this use occupied at any point in time. Because with the cleaners, it's a, it's a faster turnover. You're in, you pick up your, or drop off your.
But it's a less, a smaller number of cars than what would occur at the turnover of a class that controls.
In terms of the time duration, so if you look, we look at one-hour periods in terms of peak generation, the numbers would be comparable in terms of the vehicles coming in and out of all the four driveways. From your point and from a parking standpoint, the cleaners would have had a less peak parking demand.
Right.
Because it's a shorter duration. So the parking utilization at any one time when the classes are in session and full would be more than the previous use.
Okay. I'd have to think long and hard about what you just described to me, but it makes a little bit of sense, so I'm sure if I thought about it more, I'd understand.
And, you know, with this site, with the four driveways, you know, it spreads out the load, keeps it out of the neighborhood because it has the access to twenty-two. Twenty-two is always busy. The one driveway is blocked many of the time when the, when the signal is turned. However, the other driveway is more usable.
And I guess, as you said, much of the circulation on the site can be addressed with proper striping.
Signing and striping, correct.
Such that what we're proposing or what we think is going to happen, you have a good likelihood that they will obey that and not, or at least conform to and not go down Merritt and.
Yes.
Is that a safe assumption?
Yeah, I think that would, you know, keep the traffic out of the neighborhood, because it's circuitous to really get anywhere else if you do go down Merritt. So other than people that live in that immediate area, or they would use that, but otherwise it'd have access to twenty-two.
All right, I'm good. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? I don't know too much about the business model, but I, there's classes every ten minutes, right? That's something, that's what four forty does. Does that help? Does that alleviate or aggravate any of the parking, being that there will be turnover every?
I think the turnover is a good thing in terms of what they're proposing here.
Do you want to hear a little bit more about the operation on that point?
Yeah, I think that's important to have.
I do too, because if you have people leaving quicker, it'll alleviate the, there won't be a big. Yeah, you don't have.
You don't want a full occupancy and then a full load coming in.
The key is the volume at a certain given time.
We're talking over each other right now. It's one at a time.
But I'm assuming like there's some sort of staggering going on so that every ten minutes people could filter out, alleviating some of the concerns.
I believe that's what they're proposing. I think you want to hear more about the actual operation.
I'm just throwing that out there, because I don't, I haven't heard it mentioned yet, that I think there's a, something that might factor into this.
I imagine if that's part of operations, it would be in your model. Mr. Dempsey?
Yes, Mr. Greeley, do you look at, open up?
If you could just use the mic, thank you.
It's not that granular?
As Mr. Greeley said, we look from a traffic standpoint, spread out over the entire hour, as opposed to an every-ten-minute cycle.
So let's hear the business plan, or the operation.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Before you get into the operation, there is a question that I have for Mr. Greeley with respect to a condition on the property. At the first curb cut, okay, we have a lot of instances in, when the dry cleaners was in operation, where the first curb cut on Merritt is approximately a car length into the property, it's into Merritt, and it is a one-way street.
This is one way away from twenty-two.
That is correct.
You have a curb cut right here. You have a curb cut in the rear. This is what I was referring to as parking space number one. This is our area of concern, why we want that space removed, because of the proximity of what occurs at that location.
In addition to the space, there is a situation where the vehicles, in order to avoid coming out onto twenty-two on that center curb cut, will go to the first cut on Merritt, go against the one-way, because it's less than, it's approximately a car length.
I used to do that all the time.
Right now, there's, there is, there is no signing. As you come out in our report, we recommend no left turn signing, and that's where the details of signing and striping come in. But that's, that was our point, to eliminate that possibility, because it's so close to the intersection. Without the signing, the tendency would be to do that.
Can we zoom in a little bit more? I'm sorry. Could you just zoom in on that lower left area?
On that corner, yeah.
I think more effective would be to use those things that they use at the car rental.
That's good.
Places at the airports where if you go over. Yeah, yeah. No, the ones that rip up your tires. That would work, right?
We've, we've seen that before.
This is his gesture, softer, gentler.
Their proposal is that each of these driveways are two-way driveways, and their proposal is to keep it that way. We had asked them to look at a different circulation pattern, that maybe this was an entry-only and this was a two-way. Their initial feeling was that they wanted to keep that. We want definitely no left turns coming out of here signage. And this parking space here, to me, is problematic, because we only have about seventeen or eighteen feet for that drive aisle. So in addition to your comment, if a vehicle does come in and someone's maneuvering here, there's not enough room to pass. So we feel it would be better to eliminate that particular space, but still maximize the remaining spaces on the site.
I was just asking to see if the signage recommendations that you're making encompass that dangerous left.
Yes, it's a specific comment in our review letter. It was a specific comment in our review letter.
Are there a lot of infractions there?
Excuse me?
Are there a lot of tickets given out there?
Yeah, the police refer to it as the old flip-flop because it's just a quick... Yeah, it's a thing.
There was not an accident pattern from the data that he provided, but, you know, it could be one of these locations of, quote, "near misses," but the signing will be significant to help that situation.
Really? That's all it takes, like, one sign to get this out?
The big thing is there is no left turn. No sign saying no left turn there, and for a while, there was also no sign saying one-way.
As I said, I did it many times, so...
So, both those signs are missing. The one-way has gone in, but there is still...
Okay. I think we're going to stop...
So, we've agreed to put that in.
Okay. Let's move on to operations here. I think we've talked about parking. We know what's going on. It sounds like everything can be worked out. Yeah, yeah, we have to, thanks for reminding me. We have to, you take this off. I won't forget. It's written right here. Thank you.
Okay, so, in connection with the special use permit, I had submitted a statement to the board that addressed the general and the specific standards, talking about harmony, appropriate development, and operations. As we said, you know, we are not making any changes to the existing structure in terms of harmony and appropriate development. It already exists. It's been there for many, many years. We're not making any changes. You know, our opinion is that the use is consistent with other uses in the corridor in terms of type and intensity. There are other types of facilities, fitness facilities, you know, in the area. So, it's not different from many of the businesses in terms of type and intensity from that which is already there. In terms of operations, a little bit more about the facility. As it was already said, they are forty-minute classes. The classes are capped at six per people per class. You can, you register in advance for a class, either through the use of an app, or there's someone, there are two employees at the facility. The facility itself is basically an open floor plan. If anyone, I'm not sure how familiar folks are. It's an open floor plan with four stations, six people maximum, and they are predetermined workouts at each station. So, each station is a ten-minute, so ten times four is the forty. Now, there's a rolling element to the attendance. So, each of these stations are on ten-minute intervals. So, if someone wanted to come in, they could kind of jump in, presuming that there's room, into a station. So, at every ten-minute interval, people can come and kind of jump into a station when that station starts. So, there's the ability there to kind of operate on a bit of a rolling basis, like one of the board members had mentioned, assuming that there's availability for that particular station at that start time. That's essentially how the facility operates. There's no activities done outside. There's no speaker systems, nothing audible outside, no, nothing functions in the exterior portions of the building. So, from an operations standpoint, that's how the facility will operate internally. And relative to the external factors, I think, you know, that's really covered by the traffic and the parking that we've been talking about.
So, let me just understand that, just so I do, that the ten-minute state, the six stations, ten minutes at each?
Four stations.
Four stations, ten minutes each.
Ten minutes, so if you...
You could do a loop, and you have forty minutes, right?
Correct.
Or you could come in and do two and go home, right?
Correct.
Or you could do, you know, do as many as you want, right? You could do six, right?
Theoretically, you could do six. You could do two. You can do whatever you want. The workouts are scheduled, they are planned, and they're organized by body parts. So, the way it typically works is, these, people will know what the workout is for the particular circuit. So, if someone's looking to train lower body, then they'll come on a given day, which is a lower-body day. If it's an upper-body day, they'll come on an upper-body day. Sometimes they're mixed strength and conditioning days. So, the workouts are always changing. So, it's not as if it's always going to be the same. There's variations in the workouts by days and times that kind of keep, you know, keep it mixed up so it's not repetitive.
Right, so it's not going to be like yoga six, where every sixty minutes, there's another class coming in and another class leaving?
Correct.
There's someone staggered.
You said it's six total, or it's six per station?
Six per station maximum.
Sure.
Yeah, please.
The board's permission?
Twenty-four.
I'm Greg Moss. I'm the investor in my wife and her sister's Sweat 440. I may butcher this a bit, so I apologize in advance, Kristen, but the premise was built out of Miami, Florida. It's a franchise called Sweat 440. They're hitting a hockey puck right now, and they're going to seventy-two locations this year across the country. And the premise is, it's not like an Orange Theory, it's not like an Equinox. It's for the person that doesn't want to schedule something in advance and just wants to be able to walk into a class and start a class. It's very similar to a Curves, if anyone remembers what a Curves was. So, there's four stations, and you start at each station. Each station goes ten minutes. You can't do six stations, you can't do two stations. You start the circuit, you finish the circuit. Now, obviously, if you're tired, you can leave, right? But the idea is that you finish all four circuits, you walk out the door, there's no loitering, there's no place to hang out, there's showers, two bathrooms. And the adoption we've been getting in the neighborhood is really, some of the stay-at-home moms, some of the people that are dropping their kids off early to school, it's just super convenient. This is one of the reasons that the franchise has taken off, is because it has this convenience factor, that you're not plugging in a schedule, like, I'll be there at eight a.m., I have to be there for an hour, and more importantly, if I miss that class, I lose my money, right? So, at the end of the day, it's been very, very successful. It's continuing to scale, and I think they're going to be very, very successful in the neighborhood.
Thank you for the explanation. It's helpful.
I don't know, the board have any questions?
Nothing on the traffic and parking, because I think we beat that one to death. The only thing is the utility pole, right? That's the only open item. I'm sorry?
With the board's permission, the owner may speak. Thanks.
Sure.
Just wanted to give you a little background of that pole.
Yeah, state your name again.
My name's James Romeo. I'm the landlord of the property. Romeo Realty Corp. Just to give you a little background on the pole, they will get you what you need moving forward. My grandfather built the building in the fifties. There was a utility shed back there, and there was a utility pole. So, the electricity lines come in from Merritt. There's a pole on Merritt that come across to this pole in the back parking lot. From that point, they pipe down underground into the City M.D. building. So, you have about twenty feet of aerial lines coming into that pole. So, the thought is, and we've been speaking to some contractors, is to get it underground, the remaining twenty feet, and just get rid of the pole. So, it's not about moving the pole. I'm trying to get them underground and out of the way. So, I just wanted to give you a little background on that. We're working on it. When we have it, we'll get it to you. Okay?
Great, thanks. I liked the little bit of Eastchester history there, too. Very nice.
It's an electric line.
Correct, yes.
So, it's a Con Ed thing, so they have, so they have to move it. Who, does Con Ed, I guess you have to come back because I'm not done.
I'm sorry. I would have to do a little bit.
I have a good loud voice, but...
Because it would have to be in coordination with Con Edison, so I would be responsible for trenching and getting the conduit underground, and then Con Ed would come out and make the connection at the pole down, okay? So, it would be an electrician, not me personally.
But the pole's on the other side of the street, you said?
No, it's on Merritt Avenue on the corner, on the property. Not technically on our property, it's on the sidewalk.
It's basically...
It's within the right of the...
It's previously grandfathered in. Con Ed will go out to the stub out outside the property line.
So, I guess my question is, can you really just trench, or is there anything else there?
There's nothing else on the property.
No, no, underground. I noticed that. How do you know that?
Because, I can tell you, because we had oil tanks underground, which we had removed years ago legally. We had a small spill number, so I had an environmental company come out, remove the oil tanks, and we, you know, filled the ground, and that's right where it was, right in that vicinity. And we have all those reports, and it was done legally.
Do we just need this defined on the site plan?
I think we'd like to see it defined on the site plan, yes. And in any circumstance, you can't take action on this application this evening because we're waiting for determination from the Zoning Board of Appeals on some of the special permit criteria. So, that is something that they can come back with when they return to the board after the zoning board is completed.
So, we're done then?
We could do that.
Yeah, I mean, you just heard that. That makes sense.
I was just trying to give you a little background.
Yeah, yeah, no, thank you for the history. It's always good to hear. So, that's still to be resolved. Everything else, I'm good with. I think the parking good, operation's good. It's just if this one thing can be incorporated into plan, once you figure out what it is, we'll be good to go.
Right. I've been working with the owner. It's been a very collaborative project, and he's been, as you said, working with an electrician to figure out. There were the three options. So, ultimately, I guess it will be up to the owner to decide which one he's most comfortable with. But there are still those three options, but we need someone to kind of tell us which works best.
Okay, I think we've hit on everything. So, we have to do a public hearing, a joint public hearing, so stand by. So, I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing, application twenty-five forty-one, three-six-seven White Plains Road site plan portion, and application twenty-five thirty-seven, three-six-seven White Plains Road special use permit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the public? No. Special use is really nothing we have to talk about, right? There's nothing here other than granted.
So, the applicant has submitted a letter going through all of the special use permit criteria. Two of the criteria, they acknowledge that they don't comply with, the hours of operation and the setback, so they've applied to the zoning board for those variances. And if they are granted, then they can come back to review. So, before the next meeting, if you want to just take a look through that, submit a letter, and if there are any additional questions on the criteria.
Okay, we'll get that when you come back. So, then...
So, the public hearing should stay open.
Right, so now I'm going to make a motion to continue to public here on this application to the planning board, meeting of October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Great, have a good evening. Next application is...
This is it? It's a three, a three-for, right?
Yeah, but we have to do them separately.
Yeah, these we'll do separately. They might be on separate timeframes.
And we're going to do them in the order there on the paper you have in front of you. We're going to start with twenty-five dash fifty-five, LT Eastchester, seven fifty White Plains Road. And then we'll go to Equinox, and then we'll go to Williams Sonoma.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Bob Davis of Singleton Davis &amp; Singleton. We're the attorneys for LT Eastchester LLC, the applicant and the owner of the shopping center at seven fifty White Plains Road, which, as you know, was formerly occupied by Lord &amp; Taylor. Our project team, Mr. Birmingham and Mr. You of Saks Global, and Diego Villarreal of JMC are with me tonight if you have any questions as we go forward. So, just in summary, we're going to do, I know, each of these individually, but as you know, on June twenty-sixth of this year, the board rendered its site plan approval and architectural approval for certain exterior renovations and site improvements, basically to accommodate five new tenants at the site, and also issued special permits for three of those five tenants. So, we're here tonight for three relatively minor related approvals. So, just by way of a brief overview before we enter into each individual hearing, first we're asking for only one amendment to your June resolution of site plan approval, simply to permit the applicant to post a performance bond or other security as provided by state law to secure any traffic and parking improvements that might be required as a result of the post-occupancy traffic and parking study required by your earlier July two thousand twenty-one resolution, which would also be effectively amended along with some other interim resolutions in this regard. The second thing we're requesting is for one of the new tenants, Equinox Health and Fitness Club, for which your board granted a special permit as a recreation and family entertainment facility of the indoor variety. In June, for that, we're requesting a variance and subsequently an amended special permit, as we've mentioned in the original application, simply to allow relatively normal club operating hours, which would exceed the hours provided for all indoor recreation and family entertainment facilities under the code, and they would be similar to its current hours that have been in place for like twenty-five years. Tonight, we're just requesting a referral by your board to the zoning board for the variance, hopefully with a positive recommendation. And then finally, we're here on behalf of one of the retail tenants, Williams Sonoma, to request a special permit as a food service establishment. As you know, Williams Sonoma's a national retailer of cooking and home entertainment essentials. Otherwise, it's permitted as of right as a retail use on the site, and the special permits required solely for the reason that technically, because of their cooking demonstration area and the use of a type-one hood on their cooking range, they fall under the definition of a type-one food service establishment under your code, so they technically require a special permit for that, for that particular use. So, if you'd like, at this time, I would commence with the first application on your agenda, which is the one for the site plan amendment for the applicant.
Okay.
Yep.
So, as discussed at length in my letter to the board, we are essentially asking that the board grant an amendment to the resolution of site plan approval and architectural approval dated June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, with respect to condition number four on page three of that resolution, which would also effectively amend conditions three C and three E on page seven and eight of the board's July two thousand twenty-one site plan and architectural approval. And that's with respect to the post-occupancy traffic and parking study procedure required by that two thousand twenty-one resolution, to be conducted subsequent to the occupancy of the first ninety thousand square feet of the building, which is coming up shortly. And the two thousand twenty-five resolution and others that you've granted in the interim, they all incorporate that two thousand twenty-one resolution by reference. So, in essence, that condition number three of the two thousand twenty-one resolution requires that if that post-occupancy study in the town's view requires any parking or traffic improvements, no further building permit or certificate of compliance can be issued until those improvements are completed. But the completion of those improvements would possibly involve quite a substantial period of time, because any improvements to White Plains Road, which, as you know, is also Route twenty-two, would get involved, the state and the county. And that could have severe implications for the five new tenants you recently approved, who would likely be in the building permit and certificate of compliance stage in the building out of their spaces. So, fortunately, state law, New York state law, has discussed in my letter, provides that in conjunction with site plans, the applicant has the alternative to post a performance bond or other equivalent form of security to secure the completion of those improvements, which protects the town against any unlikely default by the applicant. So, thus, we requested that the board amend its June resolution to permit that alternative posting of security, and we suggested some language in our letter that we submitted, that in order to avoid the withholding of building permits and certificates of compliance, the applicant could instead post a performance bond to secure the completion of the improvements. However, since our letter, the planning department, through Ms. Wolfson, issued a memo with an alternate suggestion, and we're very agreeable to that. alternate suggestion, and we're very agreeable to that, and in essence, that would allow us to post security and for, and to obtain building permits and temporary certificates of compliance, with the permanent certificate being withheld until the required improvements are completed. So that would be the nature of our request tonight, I'd like to just allow Mr. Birmingham of Saks Global to speak for a moment on this particular issue to express the applicant's concerns about the necessity of this particular amendment.
Actually, I think he said it all, I, once I saw the recommendation, that's adequate to meet our needs and our concerns about finishing the work for the tenancy, they can still occupy under the tenant for the temporary for a period of up to two years, and that certainly should be enough timeframe for us to finish any traffic improvements.
Mr. Birmingham, I wanted to state your name for the record.
Gerald Birmingham, Saks Global.
Terrific, thank you. So you're good, you're good with the...
I'm, I'm good with the recommendation as made, and that's acceptable, it gets us to the business presence we need to create.
Does the TCO get you to go into operation, or, I mean, can you, can you...
We can open, so the gym can open under a TCO, or...
Is there a length of time?
Certificate of compliance, temporary...
Two years would be the maximum, and then it would expire, or the applicant can seek an additional amendment, but we're hopeful that if any improvements are done, are required, they will be done within that time.
But the bond remains posted until the work is...
Until the work is completed, correct.
So there's really no, there's really no incentive for you to change your TCO into a CLO, right? Because you could just keep the bond, except for you paying for the bond.
So, there's two reasons to do the improvements, which is what would trigger it, one is any traffic improvements go to the increased value of our asset, we want traffic improvements, best money you can spend, so we always want to do that, which would trigger then it becoming a permanent CLO, and secondly, we have a two-year period of time in which if it hasn't been accomplished, they go away, so...
Yep.
You're being provided a requirement that we have to...
Yeah, I'm just playing devil's advocate, I agree, you want it to get resolved as quickly as possible, just as...
I'd rather have no timeframe.
Yeah, if it's not resolved, if it's not resolved in two years, you've got to come back here.
Correct.
Yeah, and, and then we look at you and very sternly ask why you haven't finished it.
Right, and if it's anything unreal...
Or worse.
We don't want to see you again.
No, I don't want to be...
You've become a regular.
I want to be sitting at the Department of Transportation, their state board, explaining why we have to have the traffic, because I only have a year.
That's on you, not us, so, we're good.
Understood.
Thank you, so that was the easiest problem we ever solved, it was all done before we got here, so, public hearing, yes, public comments, so this is a public hearing, so I make a motion to open the public hearing on application 2555, LT Eastchester 750 White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're going to close the public hearing, motion to close the public hearing on this application, LT Eastchester LLC 750 White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, you wrote the resolution.
So, I did not prepare a resolution in advance, but, because I'm not, I wasn't sure how the discussion was going to go this evening, but I did prepare a lengthy motion that I can read, that will essentially become the resolution.
Yeah, you please read it.
Yeah, okay, so it would be a motion to amend the condition of resolution for application number 21-22, identified as condition three, under the heading Conditions of Approval, Review and Approval Procedures for Future Uses and Required Post-Occupancy Evaluations, I'll continue to refer to that as condition three, for the reasons stated in the memorandum for the board from the Towns Land Use Consultant and Consulting Council dated September 17th, 2025, to add a new subsection F to condition three, to read as follows, the new subsection, "To avoid the withholding of building permits or temporary certificates of compliance as provided in sections C or E above, the applicant may post a performance bond or equivalent security in a form acceptable to the town attorney and in an amount to be determined by the town board to secure the completion of the referenced improvements. The applicant shall submit a detailed cost estimate for all proposed improvements as certified by the applicant's traffic engineer to the town's consulting traffic engineer for review. However, the building department may not issue any permanent certificates of compliance until all required improvements are completed. Any temporary certificate of compliance issued as authorized by this condition shall be valid for a maximum duration of two years from the date it is issued. It may not be renewed beyond that term unless a modification of this condition is approved by the planning board based on a showing by the applicant that it has made appropriate progress towards completing the improvements required by this condition. Other than as expressly amended above, so what I just read, the terms and requirements of condition three shall remain in full force and effect." So that's how that condition three would be amended, and then additional conditions, so additionally, this modification is expressly conditioned upon the following, number one, to the extent condition three is incorporated by reference into approval resolutions for applications number 22-31, 24-05, 25-24, 25-28, 25-29, or 25-30, such references to condition three as amended by this resolution. And condition number two, all conditions of all prior approvals for the subject property, including but not necessarily limited to, the resolutions for application number 21-22, as modified by this resolution to include new subsection F in condition three, 22-31, 24-20, excuse me, 24-05, 25-24, 25-28, 25-29, or 25-30 shall remain in full force and effect. The end.
Yeah, thank you, I could have never done that, just, that is the motion that we're going to make, but, yeah, let's just make that motion, and so what you just wrote is the motion that is made, so do we have a second on that?
To adopt that resolution?
On that res, right, okay, I could say that, so I make a motion to adopt the resolution that has just been put forth?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all those numbers you read off are applications we've already approved.
Yes, so, right, 21-22 is the main conversion, 22-31 is the initial approval for the first 50,000 square feet of White Plains Hospital, 2405 is the rest of White Plains Hospital, 2524 is the site plan you approved in June, and then the others are the three special permit you granted in June.
Are there any more spaces that are yet to be leased, or is this everything?
We spoke in June, I think there is the small restaurant space on the third floor, and then maybe some additional space on the second floor, but not a lot.
There's a little additional space, I, I think that's left over, it's untenated at present, there's no prospect at present as I understand it.
Right, so the resolution is now part of the, part of this, okay, cool.
And the last portion of the condition was just an incorporation by reference of all the other conditions that we have included in all those prior resolutions.
So then we'll move on to, I make, the next application is 2556, Equinox 750.
Thank you. So as to Equinox, our second application tonight, under the zoning code and as set forth by your board in the special permit that you issued in June to Equinox, has a type of recreation and family entertainment facility of an indoor variety, the hours of operation under one of those special permit requirements are limited generically for all such facilities, of which the health club is one, to 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, and 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Friday and Saturday. And as we discussed in the prior special permit application, Equinox now seeks to modify those requires, required hours of operation, as it really must do to operate its business, to coincide with its present operating hours and those typical of the health club industry in general, and also similar to other clubs currently operating in the town. In order to do that, Equinox requires an area variance from the zoning board, and then, if that's granted, a corresponding amendment to its special permit by your board. The necessity for the variance is discussed in detail in my prospective letter to the zoning board, which we included in our application to your board, so in sum, since 1999, prior to the enactment of the current hours limitation, which I believe was in 2000, Equinox has been operating with hours in excess of the current limitation for all recreation and family entertainment facilities, and we now request that they be permitted similar hours at their new location, that location, of course, as you know, will be much more conducive to parking, and also to the avoidance of impacts on the nearest residences than the current location. As indicated in the memo that was submitted with our application from Equinox, the hours as limited by the code currently are inadequate for a health and fitness facility, primarily since a large portion of that particular use occurs in the hours of 5:00 AM to 9:00 AM, which are prior to normal working hours, and then also, of course, after normal working hours as well. So accordingly, the hours proposed by Equinox for which it requests the variance are Monday through Friday from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and Saturday and Sunday from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So notably, it's really only the hours before 9:00 AM that differ significantly from the code, the Monday to Thursday closing hours would only be one hour later, the Friday closing hour would be the same, and the Saturday and Sunday closing hours would be one to two hours earlier even than the current limitation. As discussed in my letter, Equinox easily meets, in our view, all of the criteria for an area variance under the state statute and your code, and significantly, as you know, New York Sports Club has been operating for a long time in the adjoining Vernon Hills Shopping Center with similar operating hours to those proposed, and such hours, as Equinoxes will be, are largely out of sync with the other tenants at the adjoining centers. Moreover, as, as precedent, this board and the zoning board have just recently, within the last year, approved expanded hours for two other health clubs, Pure Facique, Scarsdale, and Total Form Fitness, and both of those, unlike Equinox, required parking variances, and they're located in mixed residential neighborhoods, not in a shopping center like Equinox will be, and of course, you currently have before you the preceding applicant, who also seems headed toward having operating hours starting at 6:00 AM. So accordingly, under the procedures that are set forth in section 12C7 of your code, we would respectfully request that your board forward this application, at this point, refer the application to the zoning board, hopefully, we would, we would ask with a positive recommendation for the granting of the variance, and then subsequently, next time we come before you, which probably would be at your December meeting, we would request the granting of the amended special permit just with respect to the operating hours. Thank you, that's all we have.
Great, thank you. So, again, this is a public hearing, correct, so we have to open, so then I make a motion to open the public hearing on application 2556, LT Eastchester, Equinox, 750 White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it?
And then, if you want to make the referral.
Oh, it's going to stay open?
Yes.
It's going to stay open until they come back, yes.
Right, so I make a motion to leave this application open until the next planning board meeting on October, whatever.
No, this won't be back in October, because the zoning board takes two meetings to decide applications, so it will likely be December, but we'll just leave it open to a date undetermined.
Till the next planning board meeting, good, so then, any comments, guys, or we're good?
Do we want to make a recommendation that the, the zoning board...
Absolutely, yes, I will.
Yeah, okay.
So I make, I make a motion, well, because I go to the gym at 5:00 o'clock, so...
Yeah, no, I think it's, and I think the fact that it's in a parking lot, and you have New York Sports Club right there...
Right next to it.
Yeah, well, you kind of ticked off all the boxes here, you're not interfering with anybody's well-being.
So I make a motion to refer application 2556, LT Eastchester, Equinox, 750 White Plains Road, with a positive recommendation to the zoning board of appeals, and the public hearing will remain open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Two down, one to go.
Thank you very much.
Next application is, I didn't even say what it is, you know what it is, Williams Sonoma.
So we'll move on to Williams Sonoma at this point, and as, as you know, we, we have submitted a memo from Williams Sonoma, and also floor plan from Williams Sonoma. In short, on account of the technical requirements of the zoning code, Williams Sonoma constitutes a type-one food service establishment, and that's a special permit category, as you know, encompassing any establishment that has an appliance requiring a state, a type-one hood under the state mechanical code, and Williams Sonoma only falls under that category because its stores regularly include a test kitchen area for performing cooking demonstrations for its customers, to showcase its cookware, for example, to create a cooking atmosphere in the store, as they mention, and, and to give out samples, not for sale, small samples to the customers, and among other appliances, they have a commercial cooking range to do that, and that requires a type-one hood. This is a rather anomalous situation, because obviously, Williams Sonoma does not constitute a restaurant of, of any kind, in reality, and in particular, it's not a formula fast-food restaurant, or a formula fast casual restaurant under your code, we recognize that, and I'm assuming it would be a condition of approval, as the, the planning department memo points out, it should be, that in the unlikely event Williams Sonoma would ever want to become more of a conventional restaurant use, it would have to come back to your board, of course, for an amended special permit, so thus, at this point, we would simply request that your board issue a special permit to Williams Sonoma solely to allow it to conduct its, its test kitchen and a pertinent back-of-room facility, as they say, I think it's a total of about 400 square feet where they, they have the actual demonstration, and then they, and then they have the back area where they have sinks for cleanup and so forth, so it's a, it's a small segment of their store, but it's, it's a regular segment of all their stores, so we would ask for the permit for that very limited purpose.
Great, thank you. So this is really just about the hood, good, any comments, guys?
Yeah, it sounds very reasonable, and I have been in a Williams Sonoma store or two in my lifetime, and my wife is very excited about the prospect of this one opening in Eastchester.
It's going to cost you...
Yeah, it's a, a very reasonable request, and within the limitations that you suggest.
Yeah, and the applicant did submit a detailed letter going through every, all of the special permit criteria, one thing I just wanted to kind of ask, just for clarification, the number of cashier stations, there are no cashier stations near the hood, right?
No, there are not.
Okay.
And I believe the floor plan clearly indicates that.
Sure, okay, that's all I wanted to, just, you know, remind you that all the permit criteria have been addressed in the letter.
Yes, all of our wives are going to be happy. I make a motion to open the public hearing on application 2557, Eastchester LLC, Williams Sonoma, 750 White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing in the same application, Williams Sonoma, 750 White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, so they went through everything, so really, now it's just to make a motion to grant a special use permit for a food service establishment as requested in application 2557, LT Eastchester, Williams Sonoma, 750 White Plains Road, for the reasons explained in the applicant's submission for this meeting and as discussed during the hearing.
Second.
And we have two conditions, yeah.
With the conditions, yes.
Yeah, we have two conditions, two proposed conditions, number one is, kind of the stock condition that we have for all of the approvals for this building, that this approval is subject to compliance with the conditions stated in the planning board's July 21st approval, application 21-22, as modified by resolution, and application 25-55, that's the one you just adopted, the September 22nd approval, application 22-31, application 24-05, and the June 2025 site plan approval, application 25-24, that's condition one, so compliance with all the conditions of those approvals, and number two, this special permit, this special use permit is granted based on the nature of the food service establishment that is being proposed, a demonstration stove and hood in a retail store, an amendment to this special use permit approval shall be required before any subject tenant space is used for a different type of food service establishment, such as a restaurant or other more conventional food service establishment.
Agreed.
So, right, subject to those conditions, the motion to grant the special... So right, subject to those conditions, the motion to grant the special use permit?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Three for three, you're good.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I make a motion to close the town of Eastchester planning board meeting of September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five at nine fifty PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Take care, guys.
You too.